You want to start? Good afternoon, everyone. Like to call to order the big cover city council study session of Tuesday, October eighth. Twenty twenty-two colonies that are running a little bit behind. It is two oh nine P M. And we are going to start. We're gonna try it. Um. I don't know. Is there a timer on the screen or do you want me to use or? So we are gonna really try to stick with the times that are set for each department so that we can be respectful of their time as well as our time. And try to end right at five if we can. Um. Just so I know ahead of time, is there anyone that needs to leave right at five o'clock? Or are we good if we have to go over ten minutes or so? Okay. All right, so I will do roll call from my far left, council member like here, council member Benson here, council member Rodenberg.
Here.
Council member Barbara.
Here.
And council member Henderson.
Here.
And council member Wood and council member Storset are excused today. So we will start off with our legislative discussion and this is our city administrator Katrina Newton.
Thank you, Mayor. Now the main council, starting my ten minute timer for legislative.
Well.
And this really has to do with the council as a policy makers. What I have up on my screen is the twenty twenty-two description of function in review of our proposed budget. I believe there was.
Oh, page number.
So, well, I'm on the twenty.
Thirteen.
Oh, you're on the twenty-three. Okay.
So I will show you in the current budget on the thirteen. Unfortunately, in our. Melting the budget into a smaller bite-sized piece, it appears that we put some of the mayoral beneath. Under the legislative function, so I am going to be speaking from the twenty twenty-two. Description of function because this description of the council does not what the mayor's powers are. So essentially legislative, you set a policy for the city, you approve the city budget. Organize our affairs of the council, you fix the compensation in this budget. You adopt our ordinances and resolutions, you exercise powers of eminent domain borrowing taxation, grant of franchisees. And other duties and all of the other duties prescribed to you under the revised code of Washington. We do apologize for this error. It will be corrected in the draft that goes forward to public hearing. That being said, now speaking from the current budget that you have on page thirteen. The twenty twenty-two highlights, which although there are not many listed here, are big in nature. In terms of the established city of the Carter strategic plan, that is our forward-looking plan for. The five goals council indicated that they really want to prioritize the work of, and it's really seen in this budget. The fact, all of the different items that you're funding, it really shows that we're putting our money where our mouth is, so to speak. You effectively continue to adopt resolutions and ordinances that were brought forward to you. You continue to work with us, especially in engagement and transparency as we are going back out to the community after the COVID. Nineteen pandemic had us being away from each other for so long. As well as some other improvements that you know that we're working toward. And then also something that's helped really helpful with this council is your alignment on our legislative priorities and having that strength together to be able to move forward to the state. Federal. Legislatures to promote the interests of our citizens. Under strategic priorities, things that we have heard from council. That we put in here for you would be long-range financial stability, and these are on top of the strategic plan. Continue to ensure city get Carter success through policies that fulfill the strategic plan. And then work with regional agencies on major issues for congestion and movement and transportation. And so again, this is also in alignment with the strategic plan that is prominently placed in the front of the budget. And will be put good on an eleven and a half by seventeen pulled out. In the final budget so that people have a larger copy along with a larger copy of the capital improvement plan map and. Organizational chart. So there'll be three kind of big, big pieces that we pull up. Let's see, looking into the budget overview. You will see that I guess what I would. Call out is under services for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four ask. I know one of the council members yesterday was looking for rough, they're being roughly double. You know that under services, we have bumped that up to fifteen thousand for the next two years, and that really is in direct relation to. Council members requesting to be present at A W C conferences for our M S A needs to learn about risk. Or safety. And so we have the budget now available to be able to send council members to various trainings. Also within here are the salaries that you each get and any benefits and then supplies for. House or related needs.
What benefits are included in that?
Well, that would be social security. Yeah, that's arguably not a matter, but.
All right, because I would love that in healthcare.
I don't know.
Not for ten thousand dollars.
I'm sure you'll have membership, yeah.
Yeah.
So supplies at eight thousand, is that computers, things like that, or are there different line items?
Computers or cell phones that need to be replaced or. You know, if you need binders for certain things or need to print you booklets or. Any of those types of items. We want to make sure we have money to be able to accommodate that. And that's really it for this unless there are other questions.
I just wondered about the. Labels around the bottom of that slide. What? I didn't understand that.
That's your org chart.
That's your org chart. I was, I was thinking we could probably throw names into that one because that's not going to change like employees.
Yeah, that'd probably be good too.
You know.
I mean, they'll change halfway through.
Yeah, I was. One of them will change in about a few weeks.
This is true.
Yeah. That's true.
Yeah, but we can put citizens and then.
I was gonna say, we should put the resident.
Yeah.
Citizens up top, yes.
Citizens.
I agree.
Yeah, we can do that for sure.
I love that.
Then that will also show, you know, anyone who. I mean, we really wrote this and wanted to make it smaller. And again, kudos to David for making this possible and not the leadership group for kind of thinking outside of the box on this. But we really wanted it to be that anyone that lives here or is interested in what we're funding. You can relatively easily get to get to that. And so anyone who's wanting to look at the budget to learn a little bit more about government, they can see, okay. The councils are responsible for the citizens, the mayor is also elected, but you know, has these other administrative items.
This is so much easier to understand than.
Is it appropriate to have the terms? Council members. This that will let the public know that that particular council member's term is up in twenty twenty-four or something.
Yeah, we could, we had a term. We can definitely put the current council members, especially the ones that worked on the budget. In here and then put the terms so that you know they'll be changing. Or names may change.
Yeah, and terms may change too. If someone comes in halfway through someone's term or someone comes in. You know, but we can, this, this may be a rotating page that we just update and send you all out of the current copy when elections are done and things like that. But that's a great idea. We will see that information and know. Yeah. Okay, right. Great. So we will move right along to our second, which is a non-departmental items, and this is Dave Rodenbaum, our administrator.
Thank you. This is pretty much the catch-all department, if you will. Even though we call it non-department. For general fund page twelve.
Thank you.
Just that one.
All right.
And in here we pay election expenses. So every year we have to pay the Pierce County auditor based on. For capita formula they come up with and split their budget throughout county. Nominations, A W C, P R. S C. Future Sound Clean Air Agency, such like that, we pay for that. We have some left one retirees and we pay their benefits through here.
What is left?
Law enforcement.
Okay.
It's, and it's the old plan where when they retired, I don't know the terms, but when they retired, the city or the municipality is on the hook for their medical for the rest of their lives.
Okay.
And so we pay for that through there. We pay debt service through here and that's about. Four hundred thousand. If you look at transfers out and the budget overview. Transfers out, that's really the big number in here. And that's the one that really impacts the general fund and that's the one we have to jockey around. And within that number, we have four point seven million going to street operating. We have three hundred eighty thousand going to street capital and two fifty to park development, four hundred to debt service. And. The street operating number was actually doubled when we first started this. We had to take out the the chip seals. Those were like two point two million three each, each year and. When we first started this process, the general one was like in a negative nine million, I think. Because you splash in everything you want and then you start pulling back and seeing what you can do. And so this, that's when we call the general fund the catch-all. This fund can legally distribute money anywhere throughout the city for any purpose council approves. And another big item within this fund is insurance. So insurance is about a million bucks for the two-year period. Nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand, we're estimating, will go over the two years. And then this also includes the hundred fifty thousand dollars per year for the insurance, for the, for the insurance for the museum. Okay, hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay, so that's for this year, next year, and then twenty twenty-four.
But that's somewhere in the budget, the ones you just rolled off. Are they in the budget somewhere or?
Yes, they're in the museum numbers would be under services in that one point six eight five number.
Oh, you still have break broken out. There is no item or anything that Jeff had broken out also.
No, if you want, we can, we can list certain things out. We, as Katrina was saying, we're trying to.
Yeah.
Not give so much. So it's so busy, you have trouble finding stuff, but if there is some information that you would like to see and would be helpful, we can surely display it.
And also feel free to ask at any time. More than happy to give out that information.
Yes, for sure. And then the other thing that's lingering in here and this we kind of will roll into when I get to the finance department, credit card fees. We have every, you know, every time you pay with a credit card, the. Acceptor pays a fee anywhere from one and a half to seven percent or so. And we've been getting, those have been really up this last year. I think two years ago, we looked at it, we charge a two percent surcharge on credit cards, and this started because. One of our developer came in and was. Charging eighty thousand dollars a day because his card wouldn't take. Whatever the payment was to the, through that permit. But that eighty thousand was the max. And so it was like for two weeks, he came in eighty thousand a day, eighty thousand a day. And it was just killing us in terms of fees. And so. The industry has evolved to where governments can charge a surcharge. And we qualified for a two to four percent and at that time administration only wanted to do a two percent. So we have a two percent fee on that to discourage such large. Transactions, but I think some of. Some developers out there doing that again, and our fees have gone way up. So we're going to revisit. And then see if we can't increase those fees. And then the next thing we're going to do, whether we can or not, is we'll back those fees into. The development fees that you'll see in the fee resolution as a cost of doing business. And I think that's about all I have to talk about with this particular area. If you have any questions.
Folks may differ, and I know we want to simplify this, but something like that museum payment, it might be helpful to have that. Cause I know in past years, there was more of a narrative. So you can go into. See which organizations we were supporting. So I don't know. I think that might be nice to.
Sure. So list out the transfers and the museum, just the more interesting things.
The same thing.
Okay.
Right? Not.
Why don't you put it dollar by dollar?
Yeah, I'd rather list down something that's over X of money.
Except, for example, we're going to be talking about senior services, and I think it's good for the public to see that, you know, if we decide to put and help them in what we have in the past, it's good to say that this is what we're doing.
Well, I, I. I totally understand what you're saying in terms of public, what we're trying to get out. The budget away from it being a policy document, which it is not. So you by counsel saying that you will pay a hundred fifty thousand dollars per year for three years to the history museum, that is a directive. So that is something that the council has decided. That doesn't need to go in the budget as a policy because you have decided that already.
Okay, so it's if we decided right here that we were going to give an additional hundred thousand dollars to the museum, then we would need to put it in the budget because we haven't done it through the legislative process.
It, it could be, but in this form, we would just increase. That line item in the budget because a decision that's made on record that's. Captured in the minutes of your meetings is a decision. When you guys have a quorum of each other, that is a decision by the council. So that doesn't need to be recaptured in the budget. Except for to fund your priorities.
Trying to say that listed like this gives, in this case, are. Non-departmental more flexibility and latitude. To expand money elsewhere without a line item saying we're going to give X number of dollars to this organization.
But, but to get to your point, if you were to say today, you know, we want to give five hundred thousand dollars to. A B C organization that you have not previously directed us to do. Then we would include that in here because there are other places that we're putting in dollar amounts, and you saw that with Jeff yesterday. There were lots of amounts. And that's because council hasn't already directed us for to. Extend those funds. That being said, I think that we would be more than happy to maybe add in here like we did with the other departments that have kind of. Twenty twenty-three, twenty-four highlights and we could highlight this includes.
Yeah, just highlights.
Yeah. And then it would be consistent with your funds. Okay.
Sure.
No idea.
Yeah, they're just.
Glad to do that.
Yeah, we can.
Yeah.
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 Speaking of that, just really briefly, since we have. Eleven more minutes on it. I was able to meet with Stephanie Lyle from the Harvard History Museum because Josh, Daniel and I put together contracts. For the money that you have authorized to go to the museum. And they are looking at that as a board right now, essentially for us to give them money. There has to be some benefit to that. And so rather than us giving them thirty thousand dollars for admission per year. We're saying this would ultimately be four hundred and fifty thousand dollars over three years. And that in lieu of us giving them that money, they would give, continue to have free admission for fifteen years. Which is four hundred and fifty divided by thirty thousand. And so Stephanie said, okay, that seems okay. And so she and her board are going to be looking at. Signing that contract and then we're hoping to get that to the first meeting in November.
Who else can we give money to like?
You've given money in the past for Arca, for instance, to Fish Street Bank. That money didn't have as many strings as others. Given money to the boat shop, I believe. A lot of the, it's other organizations that either give the city something or give citizens something.
Like the senior center?
Senior Center, Harbor Wild Watch.
So we give money to the senior center?
Yes.
And is your contract, is your contract with them?
There is a contract.
And. I'm interested in that particular subject. So I'll get to talk about it now later. I'm interested in that contract.
Okay.
And I'm interested in what they spend the money.
Okay, I will. I'd ask Josh to pull. Pull me for my evaluation. So I'll make sure that you get that as well, the, the contract and then any annual reporting that we're receiving. And so I'll make sure to incorporate.
What annual receiving they were. Tell me that they need to give us. For instance, their financials or something like that. Does that include in the contract?
It maybe. I will look at that and get back to you on that. And if all council is interested, I can definitely send that on to everyone or just council member.
I mean, from my point of view, I think it's a great idea. I think we should be doing that for all organizations, asking that of all organizations that we give anybody to, which was like a counter to where it went. So we know it's been used properly.
Yeah. I can speak to, for instance, the downtown waterfront alliance. They, because I've announced that in my position and seen what the report that they produced, which does include. You gave us.
Yeah.
X money and we did this, this and this.
That's what I want.
And so I just haven't personally laid my mind on the senior center one yet.
They, they provided some of that information in their, in their presentation to us, but I think we can get a more detailed financial report.
It's a munching, but I was looking for it in the presentation. I didn't see.
That's.
I apologize for my voice. I'm taking medicine. Seems to affect it. Awesome on it.
It's affecting your brown color.
Pardon me?
Touching your brown color.
Well, I'll take more of it.
So I will, I'll get those contracts and the reporting and look at that and send that information over.
Can you send it to all?
I will. Sure. And then if you're not interested, just feel free to leave it.
Generally, we'll be sending information to everybody's and so that we all have the exact information. And if you don't want it, file it away.
Yeah, I noticed that. I think that's a good idea.
And you can.
Sometimes I don't know I need, but when I get it, I.
Super helpful. Okay, awesome. Any other questions for, for Dave on this? On the non-departmental?
I just have a quick question about. One of the things we're, we're talking about today and in a conversation I have was to be administrative since then. We've talked about a possible like new or potential program that hasn't been brought up before. I'm not quite sure where to talk about this. About something that we've had discussions. And just get council feedback on or if I should do that.
So for all of council, there's been a, there's a potential program that a council member has just asked general questions and feedback on. And so I think the question is where to bring that up. That could be brought up today under the department that you can get to arrange you or perhaps the better. Time would be on November third, when we're talking of kind of recapping the presentations.
Great, great. And in general, I will just say it's just exploring the program of this whole vote. That looks at. It's kind of a COVID human services. It's a different model. It's a position that would go in administration potentially. But there would be more discussions about that.
It just is a suggestion, I think. At the end, after we've already seen the whole budget, because we are trying to keep this budget at a minimum. And sometimes you bring up something new, we can reflect back on. Well, if we spend this, then what are we going to cut?
Exactly.
So it might be best to do that. We've seen the whole budget.
Probably be given. Okay. Okay, that'd be great.
In the meantime, as long as you're not creating a rolling meeting, I would encourage your discretion to discuss with your colleagues in advance of the third.
I would just say that I am very interested in programs as well. I've done a lot of research on it and I think it's time. For the size of our city that our city has grown to. I think it's time to do it.
I will take, I'll heed your advice. I'm not creating a rolling meeting and if anybody has questions or wants to talk about it, I do more than.
Great. Okay. Moving on to administration, this is also a city administrator.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Um, let's see, so under administration.
Thank you.
Okay, seventy. Let's see. And I'm skipping ahead here, but. Within administration, there are. The mayor, city administrator, the city clerk and tourism and communication. And I believe we had a team here, but then split them out because they have their own fund. And Keith will be coming down to talk after Dave discusses. Finance, but essentially this is your administrative team who oversee. The mayoral, mayoral. The duties of her office, people at city administrator, who is the overseer of all the administrative functions of the city. The city clerk, the office with Josh and Tiffany, who. Make sure that we all abide by all the laws and have everything documented and do everything properly. And then communications and tourism, and I won't get too much into that because Laura will be joining us. Later today. So for today, we wanted to focus on.
Why do you?
Um, put budget note under the budget overview, the services. Line here that is the two point two or two point three million. Includes our city attorney, the prosecutor and assigned council. And so if you're curious why that is, the services are so high comparative to the salaries and benefits, that is why.
And is that? This is one of those that isn't double. Is that because we've been using those services more? And so the fees have gone up or there are other. I'm trying to remember. Oh, the strategic, I'm sorry. I remember. I know the answer now. I've got moved ahead. That I had looked ahead and answered my question. Actually, raise it.
I don't know what the answer is.
The answer is that on page nineteen and twenty, there are items that are added. Like the strategic plan from the Fourth of July event, and then in mayor, the administrator there. And screens. And that is the same area.
That's part of this talk.
Right.
Talking about that part. But also fun is looking at all the accomplishments.
Yes.
That we have done in partnership with all of you. So we've established the sister city partnership with Boda Norway. We've instituted a weekly update to council where department heads provide relatively relative. Weekly information to you that is relative to what they've been working on. We found that that's also very a good communication tool with staff.
That is an amazing tool.
So that they're feeling, you know, they aren't just hearing what's going on in their department. They're kind of getting the feel of what's happening citywide. You have any city administrator? We. As one of our. Largest pushes over the past four months, among others, has been a re-institution of training program. And so that is something that we're really proud of. We have money in the budget for training and we firmly believe in. Training and educating our employees to achieve, you know, what it, what it is that they want to achieve. And it's been so great to see and hear. Them going to conferences and just, I think, not to dive in on this too much, but you know, you go to a conference and you learn some things, but you get rejuvenated. And we kind of, why did you get into this line of work and what drives you to do that? And so I think that's really. Great for the organization and employees as well.
I think you interact with your colleagues, you know, and kick stories back and forth. I mean, what's working for you and that's.
What is?
Yeah, it's really invaluable.
Those bullet points are like a report card.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I could tell you.
Well, it's been all of us, right?
Right.
Which I'm saying, yeah.
Yes, it's, the city's report card is looking a lot better. Looking at, we're looking to do a employee retention program. We started that this year. We're wanting to kind of formalize that and make that official next year with some actual policies and. Goals that we're going to work toward. With your support, we provided five hundred thousand dollars to the fish sweeping that were from Arca funds. We established a new board and kind of board and commission onboarding procedure within that is consistent with state law and also. Within our code, we have. Another thing we're very proud of is fostering our external relationships. We have been going into all of our partners and meeting with them and. We have been going into all of our partners and meeting with them and figuring out what how things are going, what their needs are, what. Can we do better to partner together? How can we support each other? And it's just been fantastic. And we look forward to collaborating more with them and also other partners that we haven't had a chance to do that. Tracy is a hell of her first day of promise of encouraging and following through with internal promotions. There have been close to ten internal promotions.
Right. Well, look at you. Right, we that that was one of the main things that I heard before I took off this was. We haven't been able to move up. There's been no opportunity for internal. Promotions at all and. I my first thought was, why? Like it didn't make any sense to me. And so that was part of my first day's speech and. Before I even made my speech, one of the first questions someone asked was, are you going to let us internally promote? I was like, yes, I'm going. But that was literally the one of the first things that, you know, and then and then me, you know, I gathered, they get that gathering. Started off with a lot of like. You know, and it and by the end. People relaxed and smiling and I could tell there was like some hope there. And then I've had to prove myself since then. That yes, I really meant what I said. I really am going to do this. And so we've done that. And I'm so every time I have a bad day, I look at these and I'm like, okay, we are doing good things. We really are accomplishing. It feels like a snail's pace sometimes because there's so many things I want to do and to make this a better place and make the city in general a better place. And so this is, this is one that I'm happy to say we've had so much success. With making, giving opportunities for our employees to stay here for as long as they want and move up and up.
Good business.
Yeah.
Council has been asking the question. For some time.
Yes.
We're wondering why we have weren't able to fill, backfill some of these positions because we're always trying to hire the. Hire those instead of hiring the entry level and moving everybody up notch. So just good business.
It is, it is. We're excited. Well done. Well, you. Katrina and Shannon have been just amazing in in the whole HR team. In like seeing this goal to fruition. It's it's been. It's been really nice to have that support from the team and from you all, truly.
We still have twenty one minutes left on this year to have my. Candy therapy. Okay. We assisted council in two retreats. And we have worked hard to create a welcoming and inclusive. Atmosphere, not only here, but at our remote sites as well with a specific. And we understand continued, we'll need to be continued presence and commitment to. And us and not leave them. It's not city employees here and city employees there. We are all city employees and. There's still some work left to do on that, but I do think that we are further along than we were earlier this year.
I just want to add in addition to the council retreat, I didn't say this before, but I really appreciate the additional dollars and I think it was legislative for council members to go to some of these conferences. Because I can see on Facebook, you know, Tacoma City Council, all of them going. And I think that's a really great team building and revitalizing and learning. And, you know, getting inspired and, you know, I would have people calling, oh, am I going to see the AWC conference? I didn't know it was happening. So I think that's great to give council members an opportunity to. Build those relationships soon and see what other cities are doing. Yeah, and when we get those emails and it's something that council can do, that's one thing I've been trying to like. Put on my list of it's like, okay, send this to council, ask them if they want to go. And any of you that want to go, we have the funds to register you, pay for that, and then send you. And you'll mileage reimbursement, you know, the whole, the whole thing. So we want you to go to these things because you really do. Learn so much from your colleagues that are doing the exact same thing that you're doing. It doesn't even matter city size. We're all going through the same stuff, which is what I learned at the mayor's exchange. It's amazing what you learn. And then that's.
What he wants differences, but generally we're all.
Generally, the the main big issues that councils are having to to deal with and vote on and policies are pretty much the same. And so what what is the dates for like the main AWC conference?
That's what I was going to, yeah, work on was getting you guys kind of like a calendar of events for the end of the planet.
And yeah.
Yeah. This year and then into twenty twenty three, I think they have their calendar pretty, pretty well established for twenty three. So I think we can give you guys, we can get you all that information and the dates where they're going to be held, all of that.
Another benefit of that, and we touched on it yesterday. Yesterday, and that was getting our good story out there.
Yeah.
So we're telling them as well as them, so.
Exactly.
The particular person we're telling might want to come work for us.
Yeah, but you never know.
That's huge. I was going to say, because the committees on AWC that I've talked to. The last four years, we've been kind of like a pariah, like, oh, don't talk to them. It's because it's a family. It's a big family for the state. And and they know what's going on in Good Harbor.
Yeah.
And if they see new folks coming in, oh, things are normal. They're just like the rest of us. They're.
Yeah.
And and like I've been telling you, that that's how we all at the top. Maybe this is a bit better than the rest of them. Yes. A lot better.
And it would be so helpful for council to go and have a presence at these things because. Katrina and I can only do so much from our seats in terms of changing the culture and changing Good Harbor's reputation. But you are all just as critical of the heart component to us doing that. As we are. So like, we just want to like branch out, you know, like it's like, I don't know how to describe it, but. Just, you know, we need the council members out there with their faces showing in your voices and your experience. Going out to the these other communities.
I think we want to do that. Yeah.
We're like, yeah. We'll get you guys the whole.
So we're setting me up.
Setting you up.
If there's also an opportunity, thinking about telling our story to tell. What if you're taking? But to tell our story with like in the city voices. You know, and some of those like AWC publications, I don't know what their editorial calendar looks like. But if we could, one of us could write something up. That goes into the publication about how we've. Improved our outreach to community partners, how we've, you know, telling some of these stories.
If you, when you read through the magazine, they have requests for.
Talking about how we've improved, it would be. Adequate to write that article about not wanting to come. Where we came from, but.
Yeah, no, just.
Everyone else, everyone else.
They'll know.
Yeah. Just, you know, I think.
Yeah, everything. Yes, everything. And I actually just asked, AWC sent me an email and they want me to write a little blurb of. How we used our upper funds for fish. So there's like a question and like three people at the top and then a little tiny story. So I'm going to do that. And so that'll be great to talk about that. And. But yes, I like submitting, you know, articles on a bigger scale.
Certainly wouldn't want to put words in your mouth, but. That, if you recall, instead of stretching that out, that we wanted to pay that immediately because they had immediate cost.
Yeah.
That needed to be paid, even though they have this war chest.
Yeah.
They they had pledges. They didn't have cash. So they need that money now, so.
I need someone to help me write that if you don't mind.
Sure.
Okay.
Back to the last bullet on both city clerk. The welcoming atmosphere, I think your challenge is going to be becoming security upgrade. Keep it welcoming because we could say we're going to put bars in front of everybody.
I was worried about that yesterday, too. It's not going to be bars.
No, I know that, but the. The intent is keep it welcoming. So whatever the consultant comes up with. Look at it, keep that in mind, it's a welcome, it is important.
Oh, absolutely. Really good point and a good consideration, you know, COVID kind of. We increased cubicle sizes or wall size or heights and we'll put partitions too. And so that's an important consideration as well. That we need to break through.
Yeah.
Speaking of the security. Sometimes the public's. Contamination of technology may look like it's a little bar or bars. As a case of when we have to, you know. Verify your email address and send it back. Some people thought, one person in particular thought their emails were getting rejected. And when they were locked out and that wasn't the case at all, it's just they need to be told that. It's a good thing. It's not going to block you out. So I mean, that was kept. Some people kept missing that. They're missing it, missing it.
It's a really good point. And it is also on. Well, on many things that we institute that will impact the public is notifying them in advance of the impact coming so that it's not. You know, and we talked about it in staff too, when policies were instituted and it came down the line that. This is what it is now without any kind of formal collaboration or even notification. People tend to be more resistant to things when they're not aware. And so that's something that in all aspects of the departments we want.
And our public is multi-generational, not always at the same level of knowledge about technology as much as they try.
Well, now that we have the gigabyte and my podcast and all of these different ways that we are trying to reach different people that like to be communicated with in different ways. Those types of things will be in my top five. They'll be in the podcast. They'll be where we're where we're letting the people know, like when C-Click Fix gets officially up and running. And we, when our city app is officially up and running and. I might even do a little blurb about Sendio. Some people may still be thinking that, like, why have they not responded to me? Or why did it say I have to verify? I'm not creepy or, you know, and just letting them know, hey, we have a new security system for our email and our, you know, IT department. If you get this email, simply click verify my email address and it will go to that particular person and just give that little brief, you know. Reminder, because maybe there are the people that are thinking that and we just don't know it, so. Yeah.
Good reminder to see.
Love our things out there. Can we push that via social? On Friday afternoon, like put it on Facebook. And put it on Twitter so that, yes, if people aren't signed up, it remind and.
Reminds them.
Put a comment, sign up link.
Yep.
Into, yeah.
A reminder about Sendio and and Ratsomware, which was the driver. CHI transition was attacked.
Yes.
I couldn't, it was important for me to get in and I couldn't get in for three days.
You still can't get in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Part time still. That was.
Has a lot to do with my voice right now. Haven't been able to get the right stuff.
Yeah, it's critical that we protect our, our.
So.
Yeah. Yeah.
Josh, I know you're on here, which we like to talk about city clerk. Highlights.
Sure. Can you all hear me all right? Great. Yeah, just a quick recap of the stuff we went through. We've got some, some of our records up on our archive center now. Resolutions and ordinances are up there. So there's, those are searchable on the city's website. See Click Fix will be live before the end of the year, so. We're comfortable putting that in the budget is something we've accomplished. We're getting really close to the launch on that. The website, if you go to our website, you'll see the audio icon on there now. So we do have a lot of more accessibility features on the website. And then the next request, public records platform is going to go live pretty soon too as well. We're just getting staff trained up on that and then that should be out and live. Those are kind of the the big things that we've accomplished. And then just the procedural stuff, which you guys have been involved in updating council guidelines for proclamation requests. The whole advisory board member process. Flag displays, that policy we're still working on. We'll have that in the next meeting, council meeting or two. Remote meeting procedures, like what we're doing right now with some people. Attending hybrid, we've got that all straightened out, I think. And then the surplus policy for that we passed at the last council meeting. Those are the big highlights from last year.
Thank you, Josh. And just want to commend Josh and Tiffany. They have really collaborated and come together as a team and I. Not think of two better people to be supporting our city in our city clerk position. So, yeah, really great. Okay, I don't want to steal too much of Laura's thunder because she will be here later, but. In tourism and communications. Briefly, the Gigabyte, I think, is a huge success with the mayor's top five and letting people know the. What is important or new to know, or if we're getting, again, a lot of questions. And council thinks through collaboration on that. If you're getting tons of questions about a specific thing, it's very helpful. Then the mayor can put it in her, yeah, top five, like, oh, that's what that was. The mayor's podcast, I also don't want to steal Laura's thunder on where we're ranking nationally on local governments. So I'll let her tell you, but it's good. So podcasting is a really good thing. And then the celebrations that have gone on in this last quarter, which there are many great things.
And hopefully there's going to be two more before the end of the year.
We are.
We can't put that in there yet.
It's not quite that we're.
It's really nice about calling that mayor's top five is. You could have something like that and say it's information from the mayor and someone is going to think, I don't want to read. Fourteen paragraphs and find out how to get anything. You don't, top five, they know they're going to get bullet points. It's going to be concise to the point they're going to get the information. You don't have to spend half hour.
That's exactly what we want. People love it. If you have a minute of time, you can become informed on what's happening in your city. Very easily. So kudos to Laura on that. She's very keen to be. Well, the attention span of us humans and how to get information that's absorbable. Okay, getting into our goals, and this is where the, some of the funding is coming from that council member Barbara discussed. We want to wish to maintain our state lobbying contract as well as our federal lobbying contract. As for forty thousand, sixty thousand respectively. We are, both of those contracts are up, so they are. Requesting to be renewed and we're working with them currently, maybe less than that, maybe more than that, but that's our.
Do we get our bang out of the federal? I mean, we're spending, you know, fifty percent more for federal. Is that? I'm wanting to know, educating, do we get enough out of that or is our money better spent on local level? Or is that just, we're getting the same service they just costed? I'm interested.
I have similar questions that I'm currently seeking answers to. The Salmon, the Salmon Culvert grant that Jeff emailed about. Jeff and I met with our federal lobbyists and within their contract, they state that they will write grants for us. And so we requested the grant to be written for us with Jeff providing the information and we received an email back that they will be unable to write that because they don't have the expertise. And so I I'm looking into contractually what that means and if. The sixty thousand is worthwhile, but for now, we wanted to put that in here noting that the contract would need to come forward to council for.
I don't know who's bigger than Gordon Collins Honeywell. They don't have the expertise. Then we're paying him twenty thousand dollars. I would think they go get the expertise.
I know.
You know.
The mayor was very, Mayor Q was very. Hesitant. Two years ago, I remember getting a call from him about these contracts and the reason he went forward was because of the added services of the grant writing. And then we had all these earmark opportunities come up. So they did probably do some extra work trying to get us some of those funds. But yeah, that was a big deal that that really. Made, I think, all of us.
But it's a good negotiating term when we go back. You didn't do that.
Exactly. Then we. There haven't really been a lot of return on that investment, at least from my current research.
I would guess that some of the difference is because of higher commas. Just knowing that. They bill hourly and knowing the difference in services in Washington State versus Washington D.C. But there, I have.
Really comfortable with the state.
State was a really good deal.
I think we get our money worth there.
I'm not uncomfortable with the federal. I mean, I just think we've got some questions that we need answered because we know that earmarks are still out there. I think we need to make sure we're asking for the right things that are, you know, realistic and going to be attractive. And having them whole.
At the same time, we can't ask for things. At the same time, we can't ask for things just because we know they can do that, we need to ask for what we need. And, and they need to go find it.
Right, and I think what Josh and Anna could do really well is help us set ourselves up for success. Right there, the lobbyists, and they know how we need to put some money together and get funded, and so if we're not telling a good enough story federally to get funded for salmon or for transportation, then I would expect, I'm thinking very freely right now, but for sixty thousand dollars, I would expect that same process to help us tell that story. It's really the expertise we work.
Getting in the right doors.
Yes. Uh, let's see, providing, uh, funding to the downtown water from the lands. Uh, we can't see, under organizational assessment, we would like to do an organizational assessment, not with any not with any desire or need to act, but just information based on parks with the city. It's been a consistent question, should it be in public works, should it be in, uh, its own department? We want to be able to take this modest amount of money and just do have an expert come in and look at maybe three different options and what those cost benefits would be. And then present that to council, and if we stay status quo, let me stay status quo, but at least we have analyzed the potential.
Would the expert know as much as you both though?
I know, I don't.
I mean, I guess my question, the bottom line is, could that be done with your staff, you both sitting around for a day and discussing this, is that an expert?
I think that my thoughts on that are, yes, we are the experts, and I would expect Jeff, uh, for instance, to be very involved in this.
Yeah.
Organizationally, sometimes if we're too intimately involved with something or have a way that we think it should be, we maybe miss something that could make it better. And so having an outside view may be, may lead us to something that we, um, a new way, I'm not saying that it will, but there's been enough questions that I believe we need to.
I agree.
And prepare and bring it to council.
Yep.
Um, let's see, we would like to establish a new sister city in Croatia. And then also, we are requesting council twenty thousand dollars per year for an on-call grant writer. And this would be managed through administration, but be able to be utilized for any of our goals, whether it be for Jeff for the salmon work, or if it's for Carl or, um, the housing program, or, you know.
You mean twenty per year?
Twenty per year.
That'd be forty thousand.
Yeah, you're probably right, thank you.
Well, we know where we should get some of it. Yeah, and you kind of breezed over the sister city in Croatia, but we had some great city leaders help us with more. Uh, have we identified those same people in the city of Croatia? Kevin Stones, we certainly got a lot of lean citizens that are Croatian.
So for Croatia, um, there is actually one of our Gikarma residents is in Croatia, Croatia right now. And they will be having a meeting, I believe, with the mayor of Milma. Um, it's a Zoom meeting at one o'clock in the morning, I will not be attending that, but, um, there are another, there are two or three other residents, um, or part, the, part of the existing sister city board, um, that are also going to be on that call, trying to figure out, um, what we can do um, there, and then they're going to keep me updated with how that meeting goes, and then we'll find a time when myself and the mayor of Milma can meet, um, on Zoom, and either with their council and with our council, kind of, you know, figure out what we want to do there. Um, we have not established yet the mechanism for how our sister city is going to run. Um, I am actually going to be meeting with the head of the Tacoma Sister City Program in the next couple of weeks to talk about, because they've got like fourteen or fifteen sister cities, and they have a great program and a great structure for their program. And so I'm going to basically go learn from her, what is Tacoma doing, how are they doing this so well? And then could we implement that in, in Gikarma? We don't want it to be an advisory committee like Parks Commission, planning issue, because there, you have OPMA, there, you can't talk to each other. You, it, it's very, um, the sister city initiative, I want it to be very open and free flowing, where people can collaborate anytime they want, at any time of day that they want, you can't do that when it's in a committee structure, like an official city committee. So we're trying to figure out. I think the preference is to find a five oh one C three that would operate as the, um, the well, they would be the ones who would basically run it with the city funding and support for that, um, for that group. And so then you're not limited to only seven people that I have to pick, it's like anybody that is interested in doing it can participate, and um, so we're looking, we're looking at this five oh one, it would then be a contract between the city and this, and the five oh one security organization. Um, I think the current sister city board has had a few meetings about whether or not they would like to incorporate and become a five oh one C three, which I think would be wonderful, but we don't want to put pressure on them to do that if they really don't want to do that. Um, and so we've just, we're, we're in constant talks about it, so it's happening behind the scenes. I just haven't had anything concrete to come to council with yet, but it's, it's happening, it's working, we're, we're working on it.
Who is it in Croatia right now?
Uh, Claire Petrich. Yeah, I volunteer. It's so beautiful, it's so beautiful, so my friend Mal just got back from Croatia, um, and anyway. We may all be lucky to go, and have a sister city there. So we are out of time for administration, however, I want to just highlight the two additional requests. And this is under Tourism and Communications, one would be a citywide communication strategy and plan. And that has been talked about by many of you individually, as well as collectively, and that would be for internal and external communication. Um, so that we're ensuring everybody gets the information. And then additionally, there were two councilmembers that requested Fourth of July funding of a hundred thousand dollars per year. And this would be utilized to, uh, hire a consultant to not on consultant, I guess, or contractors, uh, to kind of come up with that event, run, run that, so it would be in addition to uh, Laura and Laura's assistant.
I know we're at a, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, so we're going, you're going to ask us to approve a hundred thousand dollars for that?
Not for the contract per se, but that would be for the contract as well as any materials or, um, police overtime.
The hundred thousand dollars, speaking from when I did the one in English, should be all, I don't want to say all inclusive, but that's start to finish what we did ours for.
And there's no fireworks.
Yeah. It's a community event, that's what it is.
So this one may be a, uh, there may be some debate on council about this one, and a reading report is that on the third.
And then I had a question about the communication strategy and plan, why that was necessary, isn't that something that Laura can come up with? And hasn't she come up with a communications plan and strategy, and why would we pay somebody else to do this?
I would like to have her be able to respond to that when she is here, uh, but essentially if her position is split half between tourism and then half with communication, and the half that is communications is the Mayor's Top Five, the, um, you know, a lot of those other internal, Facebook postings, the press releases, talking with the newspapers, the podcasts, and so coming up.
With all the departments, there's a lot that she does.
But these numbers are not salary, right?
Right, so this, what we're proposing would be to consult with a firm that is ex, has expertise in municipal communication plans.
So it would be a one-time.
A one-time, yeah.
Okay.
That would be implemented through the Office of Tourism and Communications.
Yeah.
I'm happy to talk about it more. I, Laura, probably ten from local cities nearby, and they're, they vary from complexity to being very simple. But I think having the, that, being able to put that out as the expectation of this is our communication expectation, this is how we communicate, it's very important. So that people know what to expect from us.
Hundred, I gotta keep going back, hundred thousand dollars for a one-day event. And we said no fireworks, and now that decision's going to cost us a hundred thousand dollars for a one-day event. And that's going to, we should really think about that hard when we get to it.
Yeah, I would, I would recommend this one. Again, this was a request of two councilmembers to put in here, and it piggybacks on the discussion that we, we all have. So, that's why it's included in that budget. And if you choose not to fund it, then that's okay, too. And that concludes that, and I, I took some notes, and we'll make sure that we respond back to you on um, the senior senator of the conference states, looking at the AWC voices, how we can get into there. Continue to look at notification to publish when changes are happening, um, push our gigabyte onto social media, and then continue to have conversations about federal lobbyists. Moving forward.
Thank you.
Great.
Um, so moving back to our finance director, David LeVoy.
Thank you. Twenty-two highlights are, are, are listed there, I will, uh, page twenty-six. We'll rush right in, I'm trying to, you know, let's bang for my buckets, I can. I won't read back to you what's already written there, there's a few things I omitted, because I spaced out on one. Uh, we now do investments outside of the local government pool. And the reason we haven't in the past is, gosh, the interest rates were point five percent return. And the, the differential going out to treasury and such just didn't pay for the added cost of, of, of work we happened to do it. But since rates have gone up, if they stayed where they're at, like, for two years, we're looking at another four hundred thousand for the city. You know, just by doing our investments, and we, we kind of jumped in with both feet, we had about sixty million in the pool, we took twenty million and put it with US Bank, and we have some ladder securities, and so we, we invest three months, six months, nine months, et cetera. And, and, and go on out, and it's, it's looking really positive, uh. We, over the last year, and if this next one, uh, three property purchases, we kind of scrambled and came up with some financing for, but lately we're working on a bond sale, which, which I think I mentioned earlier, uh, at, at a meeting, but I, I won't go into details, we'll be saying some stuff on that at the upcoming council meeting, and, and a couple after that. And then on to goals. We're going to do, I didn't put it in here, this, we're going to do a credit card fee review, though. That's kind of like at the top of my list, and, and I discussed that a little bit. Internal services fund, I've had questions on that, like, what is it? The way we do things now is, for example, I am split among five different funds, general fund, street fund, waters that were stormed, and, and we do it on a reasonable percentage. We don't charge most of me to sue her, which is our big cash cow here, it, we do it pretty much where the effort is. What the auditors really want to see is that we charge all the costs of finance, and then we bill out to the different functions. And so you can see a component of, like, uh, the police, well, not police, because it's general, but street, the street fund, you'd see, uh, administrative fees, and, and we would build that out. I'm dragging my feet on that, because it's a lot more complex than it sounds, and it would really alter the way we do business on the ground. So in other words, the public work staff that, that buy from Ace Hardware, you know, from West Bay. They're already trained for the barcodes and the splits, and so to upset the apple cart just to, to meet a cool administrative requirement, I, I, I don't buy it. So I've been fending the auditors off, and they're pretty happy right now, we have sort of a, a mini cost plan behind justifying the, the splits that we have, to, to show that we're not outrageous and that we're in the ballpark. And it kind of has kept them at bay right now, and, and, and so until they really speak up, I, I don't really want to implement this, number one. Number two, we don't have the staffing right now. You know, for the indirect cost allocations, and so uh, you'll, you'll keep seeing it as a goal, and, and we'll manage that as we go. Internal services funds, we're looking at information and technology services, and, and again, Keith has assets all over the city, and, and it's really tough to track, like, how much do we spend on, uh, a certain router when it's split across the whole city. And so it'd be nice to just have ownership in one fund, and then we bill it out. And that, what's going to follow really soon behind that will be a vehicle or equipment rental fund. We, we talked a little bit about that reserve fund yesterday, we're building up a, a, a fund balance in there, and one of the hard things about starting an equipment rental fund is you got to fund it, and so you have to take a huge chunk of money from your general fund to fund it. And, and then you get rolling with it, and so we're sort of building that up, and myself or whoever's in my position down the road will, will come to you and say that now's the time, and we've got this money here, let's morph this thing into an equipment rental fund. And we'll bill out the, the vehicles and the equipment based on usage. And so that's two of the bullet points, and then general controls of federal grants, we, uh, uh, we had a single audit this year, and we're going to have another one for twenty-two because of the ARPA funds. And then, then it's going to go away, because what I'm proposing with the ARPA funds is, we have about two and a half million left in ARPA funds, but don't get too excited, because it's not like it's in a separate fund, it's in the general fund. So we sort of don't really have it, because we're right at the fund balance where we need to be. And what we can do is, we can make that city money and get rid of the federal audit requirements and all the federal strings on it. Should, should a project come up that council wants to bond in the community, that would be ARPA-related, we could still do it with ARMA. And, and, and that would work, but this will just get the audit requirements.
Please them how you have the ability to put that in our general fund.
Explain the.
How we were able to put the two point five million in the general fund outside of an ARPA.
Oh, well, there's no requirement to put it into a special revenue. Uh, uh, you, you need a special fund when you're directed, like, like the gas tax, that has to go into the street fund. But the federal government just pushed this money out and gave it to us, and we, we maintained it there. And it wouldn't make much sense to maintain this money for, I think, and we have to spend it by twenty-four, twenty-three, twenty-four. While we're quote-spent, unquote, spending it by making it city money, so, so that string gets gone. And next year, when the audit comes, we'll be audited for it, and, and we'll be fine, and yet we'll still have the money. For if some creative use comes up to use it.
And the, the, part of the money that we received was allowed to be, um, utilized for money that the city.
Lost revenues.
Lost revenues.
One of the four, yes, one of, yes, one of the four uses that they, they identified right up, right at front is, uh, replace lost revenues.
It's unusual.
Not really, a lot of places are doing that, as far as lost revenues.
A lot of cities are, are using that to replace their, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's probably one of the more common uses, uh, and I'm just speaking anecdotally, I, I don't have a study or anything on it, but.
We talked about that at the Mayor's, um, conference, and, um, they, one of the questions was, um, how have you spent your ARPA funds? And probably two-thirds of the mayor said, we paid ourselves back for either utility rate reduction programs that they did, or other, other, just other losses that, that the city has incurred. And so they're trying to put themselves in a better position for the next either annual or bi- bi-annual, you know, to cover their budgets are, and so a lot of, it, it, it was about two-thirds, and then probably the, the next half of the group that was left had used it for affordable housing projects. Um, and really creative ones, which I'm, we're, I'm excited to explore as we're coming up with our housing action plan for Gikarma, but um, but yeah, the, the bulk was, we're paying ourselves back, and there were even some cities who said, if we didn't have that capability, we would already be bankrupt, there were a couple of cities that are in real financial trouble, and so, um, so very very legal, very, very beneficial to the cities that really needed it. And this way, without the, all the strings and, and the timeline attached, we're not, like, actively seeking something we can go spend this money on, now we have time to actually wait for a great project worthwhile to, to put this money towards, and not have to be like, we have to spend this in one year, we got to find someone to give this money to, now that kind of takes that pressure off and allows us to kind of think it through a little bit more, what we like to do with it, this gives us. Kind of think it through a little bit more, what we like to do with it. This gives us the more time.
And that's why I really appreciate Dave's creativity. Because by, we're allowed to absorb it in our funds because we have less lost revenues. And so we have that. It's taking it out of. Additional federal audits, which we will have the federal audit, as we mentioned, for the fish funds. So it, it decreases our staff time allocated to that. Um, and then the council, as the mayor said, if there are projects that we want to fund out of that two point five million we can. Or we can choose to absorb it. But for now, that decision doesn't have to be made right now. So we've set, we've set it up for wh- whichever way we'd like to go in the future.
Because otherwise, in us presenting this twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget, we would have had to have had something, you know, something in here. We would like to spend this money on this and it would have to have been like laid out and we don't have any projects yet or. There weren't, there weren't any concrete affordable housing plans or any kind of anything that we took put in here. So. It, it's just, it was great to have, it's great to have that flexibility to just have that extra time to really come up with something that we think is.
And to put in another fund, if we were to want to do that, we would have to come up with two and a half million budget cuts now.
Right.
Because you have to remember, this is an austere budget because of. The, the financial difficulty we see on the horizon right now, which may or may not occur. And, and generally in my experience here is we pretty much get into the budget period and we're better off than what we had planned. Because this is just on paper and, and our experience, we're, we're pretty lucky here that our economy is robust. And we're a strong organization and we have good reserves to pretty much weather these things. So, so down the road, that money will be there, e- even though it's not sitting, jumping out right at you right now here.
So let's say revenues aren't what we want then, and let's say we really want to, for example, just drying this out, retain staff. And not, you know, have any staff changes, we could potentially draw on some of these funds and hopefully.
We kind of already are, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Part of our strategy for staff retention in the event that the recession happens, which is why Dave mentioned. Our second year projections are flat so that we weren't, um, proposing to over spend.
Right, okay.
Well, last thing we wanted to do is lose.
Exactly. And then the cost of rehire. Yeah, I, yeah.
And there's some big formula, uh, in the, in the beginning of our budget to calculate lost revenues.
Right.
And for us, it came out to about three and a half million and we got about three million. So we would have slid under the bar real easy. When the final rule came out, the feds raised that number to ten million and no questions asked, kind of like a per diem ring. And they said, anything up to ten million, you can claim as lost revenues and we don't care. And so that's what we're taking advantage of.
Yeah.
Speaking of, back to the budget here on this. Um, when I see your org chart, you've got six folks in there. When I look at your salaries, you only got two hundred and fifty thousand, let's say two seventy. Do you have enough salary in there for the people that you would need?
I, I do. The, the, what looks weird there is, this was gonna be my last topic for, for finance. We budgeted a senior account, a second senior accountant for this year. And the original plan last year, which. I don't think would work was to hire a senior accountant to shadow me.
Yeah.
And learn my job. And then when I go away, that person would become the finance director. You're not gonna, in this job market especially, you're not gonna get someone to do that. It, it, it's, it's gonna be hard enough just having it vacated and, and recruiting that person. And so after discussing with Katrina, we. We have way more, more work. And last year I sort of was trying, I wanted it to be full time. It was gonna be a temporary position when, when it became finance director and you weren't gonna back it up. You're gonna stay with one senior accountant. We, we can't function that way. Uh, Jackie, who is a senior accountant is. Working to the bone. I mean, she's, I'm, I'm pulling her along because she's just overworked. Uh, we, we don't reconcile our banking council among. After the prior month is closed. And, and that's unheard of in a, in a business. It should be within a couple of weeks, but it's just, she has so much work. And so what we're proposing is another full-time permanent senior accountant. And when we get that position on staff and we split the duties between Jackie and her, if and when I go away next year. You can, if maybe we get lucky and we get some overlap, but if we don't, those two folks can carry the department. And then Katrina could take on some of the duties that I would have that they can't do, like, like, uh. Jackie reconciles the count. She can't sign for it, you know, because you have to split that, that, that duty. You, you, you know, so, so a lot of the segregation stuff and then that would bump to Katrina just to sign and, and we don't, certainly don't want to dump our work on you, Katrina, but. We, we wouldn't, we wouldn't do a face plant as, as far as the, the, the function carrying on. And, and, and Jackie, whether she knows it or not, knows ninety-nine percent of all that we do, but there's things she can't do and then she's just too busy.
And so I, I'm still trying to reconcile your, your org chart with your salary, even with three people. Is that, I mean, just wanna make sure that you've got enough in there for you. I'm not questioning what you put. Well. I'm saying you have enough based on what I'm seeing here in our chart with six people, but you're talking about three. Is that, I mean, if it's enough, just tell me, but I start looking at numbers here and I'm thinking. That seems a little meatier for even what you've got right now, plus what you're going to need. I mean. Face it, our, this budget's almost two hundred million dollars now for the city. I don't want to shortchange yourself on this, just to make it look good.
I'm the last place I would shortchange.
And I'll turn this, this is the day you're ongoing.
Yeah, that's a better idea.
You know, best laid plans, but, uh. I will double check that. I'm pretty sure we've done enough.
Like, I mean, I, I think. You have a critical role in this place. You, you're the finance department. Still want to be shortchanged because.
I'll double check the number.
Can you triple check?
Yeah, for sure. For sure. Thank you for noticing that.
You may have money come to you you don't know about.
Tell them I wish.
Uh, time check council, it's three twenty-six and we're supposed to break at three thirty, but I would like you to still be able to go before the break. So our break will be delayed a little bit and, um. But if we can move on to IT, that would be great. And thank you, Dave, for talking to us about. Keith, um, you're. She did have a shirt that says Keith is closed for the day. My name is Keith. I do not want to help you.
Do you need a screen share capability or anything?
Presentation. So, yeah. Afternoon, this will be page twenty-three. Yeah, so, uh, my department, we look in all the technical aspects of the city. That's kind of like a level there, uh, highlights. Kind of broke out. Try to make it easier to explain, but for building facilities, um, did we have the data center here, uh, the cool air conditioning. Environment controls for temperature monitoring, uh, lighting and did install some new, um. Equipment cabinets to house the new equipment that's out there. Um, we also migrated the city's HVAC controls over to the new infrastructure that was put in during this time period. Uh, prior to that, it was on some really old hardware that was kind of unreliable. Uh, for software, um, we deployed Windows ten to well over a hundred user, user devices along with, um, Office three seven five. All built into a consolidated image and that became the standard operating system for all the users across the city. Uh, for the communications, um, we did some restructuring, uh. The way that traffic flows across the network infrastructure between all three locations in the city. Um, we upgraded our phone system. It was mostly a software upgrade, but. It had, um, not been upgraded for like six or seven years. So it was pretty outdated at the, at that point, but now it's up to date. And, uh, we completed, uh, implementation of the wireless at all city locations. So that kind of completes the highlights there. Uh, for roles, since we moved into a bi-annual budget, um. Have fund management, which they covered, uh, establishing internal service funds. So we were working. Kind of audit that and get that established. Takes time.
So is that like a, a banking counter or you just have a system when people pay?
Wh- what it would be is we would, we would have another fund, like we need one, right? And all these funds we have, but we have another fund. And that fund was holding all the computer assets. Keith would distribute what, let's say Carl in planning needs, needs a certain type of computer or Jeff needs a CAD system. Keith would own it and get it and supply it to him. And then we would build that cost to that department through here, but we wouldn't actually change money. We would just budgetarily. Build that cost. See for data management, um, this is kind of a thing that has been there for a bit. Migration of data from fox.com over to Office three seven five. Mostly to align the. The data, uh, that staff uses every day and to the products that they use every day. It's more of a productivity. Um, improvement there. Uh, under cybersecurity, um, looking at establishing a penetration testing and remediation program. Don't have one established today. Gonna have to remove that second bullet point there where it talks about the multi-site network traffic modification. Now, that doesn't need to be there. All that was already done. It's more of a highlight, I'd say. Last bullet point under cybersecurity, uh, we're gonna look at, uh, implementing multi-factor authentication, uh, in Office three seven five. Uh, just to kind of bolster our, uh, security posture there, uh, building facilities, um. Well, once the building is started, uh, started for the new public works operations building, um, we'll need to establish our networking communications. For that building and the staff that will be working out of there. Second bullet point there would be, uh, upgrading the fiber optic cables that the police and public works engineering and community development buildings. Uh, basically there are cables, uh, communication cables that come out of this building and connect to. Police building and where community development is and, uh, engineering over there and those cables are. Um, they're same ages as building and they're aging, um, the equipment that is connected to those cables have capability of providing higher. Uh, data rates or communication schemes. But the cables, uh, don't have the ability to utilize that. So, um, need to upgrade the cables for that. Um, and then the last thing there would be just collaborating with other works to implement a door control, uh, security system. Um, that's something that, uh, working with them on. And, um. Long range plans, um, just continuing to collaborate with all the departments in the city, uh, within their technology needs. And then the last bullet, there we, uh, continue to, uh, perform security. Uh, mitigating sort of, uh, security vulnerability incidents. And then that's all I have.
Any questions? Yeah, couple of questions. When I'm looking at the number of budget overview. You have a substantial amount of money in twenty twenty-two. This budget is a three hundred and forty-one thousand. And it looks like the year-to-date estimate is more in line of Jan twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Um, but then there's another big push again for the even more than. Twenty twenty-three to twenty-four, you're going from one hundred and, let's say, hundred and fifty for your year end. So is, what's, it looks like, is the services the four fifty-nine? Is that? Part of this, um. Services system that you're talking about, or are we buying something big time or are we getting? Stop licenses and things like, I don't know.
For us, it, we have a lot of, um, subscription services, um, in the. The terms for all of that, it, it varies. Some of them are one year, most of them are one year, some of them are multi-year. So. It's a weird sort of renewal cycle that happens there.
I don't see that kind of a number anywhere else in the history that, I mean, did we get all that?
We did get, we did acquire a lot, a lot more subscription services over the past, uh, couple of years. A lot of companies. More in my realm, they're moving towards, uh, subscription services over like perpetual licenses. So, um, that's kind of the. Cash cow for them or however you want to call it. So, um, I'm expecting an increase in a lot of things, you know, kind of going forward. So, and then we're kind of adopting more, uh, technology to offset a lot of the manual processes and, um. We'll pay with these things and things like that.
It's not a surprise to us either, is it? Because I know when we got all that new equipment and everything, we said that we were switching to. This, so, yeah, this is what it is. So it's not a surprise. Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, Keith has done a fabulous job with transitioning us, especially during the pandemic, uh, supplying all of us with all of these. Uh, laptops converting, uh, getting everybody's cell phones, managing that, uh, along with keeping us secure. So we're not falling. Vulnerable to a lot of the phishing schemes that are going on. So, um, a lot of great work has been going on and. Most recently are the chambers, as we know, are now, um, modified. So he's done really excellent work. And Daniel is, um, employed currently. I would note that there's a vacant information systems assistant and Shannon and Keith and I are looking at that position to see if that's what we want to hire. Or if we would like to come to council and request a reclassification of that position to do something. Potentially in addition to that, we're not ready to propose that to council yet, but it is something that in the near future. Uh, we will be bringing forward to the council if we choose not to hire the, the assistant position.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Good job.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. All your support.
I appreciate it.
Maybe lots without you, that's for sure. When we say, how do I change my password?
Well, you know how to, you know how to find me. Always around somewhere. Are you though? Yeah, because I have a password.
You thought I was kidding. I'm sure he's going, they're all gonna need it soon. Even though we're a little bit behind, um, I know you guys are okay with staying a little ten fifteen after. Let's take our full ten minutes. I don't want to shorten that so we can all get up and move around for a while. Um, so we will come back. Three forty-eight-ish, yes, three forty-eight. All right, all right. Welcome back to the Good Harbor City Council Study Session on Tuesday, October eighth, twenty twenty-two. The time is three fifty-three-ish. And I have like five clocks I'm, I'm looking at. So we're gonna continue right on with our chief of police, Kelly Beasley, to talk to us about our police.
Well, greetings, council. Hey, thanks for hanging in there. A couple of days, this is, uh, probably a little long for you. Here's my highlights from our upcoming budget, but before we do that, we'll start with our twenty-two kind of review, some of the accomplishments. And a year ago, I sat in here and, and identified our most critical priorities and those were to recruit and retain officers. And, uh, to improve department structure and efficiency. We've done that. And uh to improve department structure and efficiency, we've done that, both of those were um fully staffed to the two thousand eighteen budget. Um of twenty-one commissioned officers, um and we did that without any recruitment, no bonuses, no hiring bonuses, so. On that we were very picky, as you've seen, it takes us a long time to hire somebody when there is a vacancy, but I. I think we've got a very solid crew right now, I think. Uh then we've also improved the department structure and efficiency a little bit by the creation of that detective sergeant position, we were able to. Task uh that individual with the, some of the administrative tasks and oversight of the records section. So that frees up the lieutenant night a little bit, now major hates a vacuum, right, so there's no lack of work on on our. Our goals that we set for twenty twenty-two, we'll go through those kind of repeatedly here, but we wanted to complete our policy conversion. Um we did a good job of that, so we get a donut and. We converted to the Lexapro uh system and that's a subscription to the policy service that services probably about a third of the law enforcement agencies in the country. Uh teams of lawyers will keep up to date on uh case law, changes in legislation, help us draft our policies. And we tailor them for our needs, but it's a it's a valuable thing, it's a good way of distributing that information to our officers. More formalized training plan, we're just going to get a gold star for that, we've uh introduced a better tracking system for some of our uh train, for all of our training. Um and now we're getting a better handle on what the required trainings are, the legislature loves to throw new training, required training at us and then not give us any money to.
Yes.
The homelessness issues, we're not sure how we're doing, right? Uh we don't see a lot of homeless, we do know that the numbers are increasing. Um we don't see that they cause a big rise in calls for service for us. Um so we're we're sitting nimble, we're staying at the ready for those sorts of things, but right now we haven't been overrun and we want to try to keep it that way. Our metro teams, we get a donut on this one, because uh these are the teams we join other departments with. Uh so we have members on our officer involved shooting team for all of the agencies of Pierce County, our metro collision response team, so we have. Uh detective assigned to, you know, there's a big crash in the county outside of Tacoma, then they'll respond and they get that. Experience of of investigating, and then when, if if and when we ever have a big collision, we bring in that same team at no cost, so. Uh it's kind of a win-win for us, uh we have other positions on the honor guard, we have. Uh a member on the training consortium with Kitsap County to teach our driving, our emergency vehicle operations, of course, we have an instructor there, so. That's beneficial, helps a little bit with career development too. Our retail theft ordinance will give us a gold star only because we weren't able to craft the ordinance that that we didn't. We wanted to try to shift the onus of retail theft to some of the uh businesses that. Didn't really take good steps to protect their their stuff, they were giving away their stuff in MRIs and, but we just couldn't fairly identify that. And apply ordinance, but what we did do is introduce that business check program that I've referenced before, and that's been very successful and in some other. Uh cities in the in the county are starting to model that now as well, so that's been a good deterrent for us. Succession planning, I think we're getting the right people in the right spots, I think that we're trying to keep upwardly mobile here. Um we do expect some turnover here in the next six months or so, so we'll talk about that in just a little bit. And on our maintain our no call too small relationship, I think that's our our hallmark, that's our strength, uh we're very good at that, we're still taking the barking dog complaints and the. Stolen garden gnomes from the Smith, so um that's good.
Many turkey basting this year around, thanks.
So Alex, well, we can explain that in detail if you guys allow.
Yeah, we'll we'll circle back.
Yeah, we'll circle back.
Okay, uh looking ahead though, some of our longer range plans, we have an ongoing need to replace our vehicles and our radios. Um we'll say gold star for that because we're refreshing our fleet, we've gotten many more years out of our cars than than we anticipated. When we uh identified and implemented the take-home vehicle program. Uh we expected that we would get five years out of each car, and we're getting between seven and ten years out of each car. Um so that's good, the radio situation is a bit different in that. Um each of the radios that we carry on our hip, those are expensive, those are about seventy-five hundred dollars a piece. And then the the same sort of radio that's in our car is about fifty-five hundred dollars a piece, those are expensive, and it's on us to initially buy those. But it it appears and and still being vetted now that South Sun nine one one will help us greatly with the cost of replacing. I'd say near their end of life, and and we do have a number of our portable radios that will. Near the end of their service life in the middle of twenty twenty-three, so we're we're standby on that one, it looks like where our costs could be eased a bit through the help of South Sun nine one. And that county-wide one tenth of one percent taxes that passed in twenty ten, twenty eleven, something like that. Training, I think we're doing a good job coming out of COVID, uh at least training has gotten crazy expensive, when we send an officer away somewhere. It courses that used to be a hundred and fifty dollars are now six hundred and fifty dollars, and it's just crazy. Uh we've tried to lessen the impacts of that by hosting more training, and when we do that, we usually get a couple of free spots. So if I have an officer that says, hey, I'd like to go to, you know, basket weaving training, we say, great, why don't you call the vendor and see if we can host that here? And oftentimes that works for us, uh at the end of December, we're hosting a big two-day active shooter training event that we're inviting some other agencies, we're getting some help from. Emergency management doing that, uh and that'll be an ongoing thing again, as COVID loosens up, we're we're able to do that more and more. Our bicycle and motorcycle units, we get a big fail on that one, uh we haven't had them out enough, uh that's. Clearly due to staffing, we just have, don't have that extra officer that we can throw on the bicycle or the the motorcycle very often, I look forward to. Uh potentially increasing our staffing levels to the point where we can get them out more, uh very popular programs on the Fishman Trail and some of our retailers. Self-sufficiency is something we identified, we're doing okay, we're working towards uh being able to stand on our own, have our own in-house instructors. Uh follow up on more of our own major investigations, not having to rely on other agencies with the county to um to help us do our jobs. Uh hopefully, we'll reach the point where we can uh cancel or minimize our special services contract with Pierce County for things like SWAT. And forensics and detective assistance, things like that, so we're we're making some progress there. And then accreditation, although we haven't seen the fruits of that at all, we've begun that process a little bit, we've just uh put together a committee to become accredited. Uh some of the dirty work is already being done, in other words, the updating our policies and get those in compliance with accredited, state-accredited standards. Uh that's already happened for the for the most part, there'll be some physical things we have to change about the department, uh better security of our records and things like that, so. Uh we're on the path to accreditation and that's a, that's a big thing. So I don't know if our risk pool gives us a break, uh if we achieve accreditation anymore or not, I think they have started that again, maybe Dave knows otherwise. Um but uh it just, it tells your community that we're doing things right, okay, yeah, we have, uh we've had, we bring in outside evaluators and they. Come through your department um. Microscopically, and they they say, yeah, you're doing everything right, so.
That's something to fall back on, is your accreditation.
That's correct.
And why haven't you done it today?
It's a real cumbersome process, it takes. Yeah, and again, staffing and time, so now that we've created that detective sergeant position, you know, I can pick up some of that, uh those tasks and and. Down that track. So that's twenty twenty-two and and a little bit beyond, now let's look at the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four budget, and we're going to focus on three things primarily, people, vehicles and training. So here's our organizational structure as we sit today, this is twenty-one commissioned officers, we've changed the title of the property and evidence technician position. Um that was the former community service officer, we found that we needed a lot more attention in our property room that's just bursting at the seams. And thank you for allowing us to move that to a full-time position, it's going to help, not only was our recruiting of the right person for that job, but they need that much time in the property room. And and some other things, uh release a video, body worn camera, that can video, things like that, so. Um what we ask for in this upcoming budget is the addition of these four positions, we want to round out our squads here. And then add yet another detective, police work is becoming way more complicated. Almost everything now requires search warrants, on a daily basis, we're towing at least one car. And then that takes the officer off the street, they have to do a search warrant, get that approved, execute the search warrant, things like that, there's a lot more video evidence available on on crimes. So we're having to send like some of our cops volunteers out to retrieve video or detectives primarily if we can. It's the the cases take a lot longer to prove, they're just a lot more technical.
Are those officers under the different sergeants? Do they, are they all cross-trained or some of them specialists in something?
So we we do play a little bit to each officer's strength and interest, uh so if we have an officer uh that says, hey, I want to become a instructor in radar. Uh that will send, we'll get her trained up to do that, or if I have an officer that says, I want to uh specialize in in tactical first aid, we'll get her trained up in that. But for the most part, when you see the word officer up there, that's your street patrol officer, remember too that we have working sergeants. Um meaning that they they conduct themselves as an officer, they answer calls, write reports, make arrests, the whole, until something happens and, you know, we need a leader to step in and. Kind of take control of the situation, uh one of the bonuses to of rounding out our patrol division, you see I've added some Ts there, that if we have everybody working on a day. We have a full squad deployed, um we can uh have the sergeant assign an officer as a traffic officer for that day. To respond to those many complaints that you and I are both getting, right? So whether they're legit traffic complaints or just perceptions out there, we still need to address them either way. It's our, it's our citizens saying, we want you to do this, so not realizing that we're chasing burglars around and things like that.
I have a question, who approves our search warrants, like for things like towing cars and things like that?
We use uh Pierce County to have a a portal uh that we can upload our our search warrants to twenty-four hours a day.
And is it a pretty quick response?
It is, it is, they really don't make good strides there, yeah, I used to be very cumbersome, boy, it wasn't that many years ago that we'd have to drive down in the middle of the night to a judge's house in our home or. Yeah, somewhere in Omaha or wherever.
Do your uh and officers have Narcan or is there some way that they're? Yeah, I know you're laughing at me, but I'm serious. How is we dealing with the, in what I perceive as an increased amount of drug use?
We've 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 kind of held off on that for now because our fire department is so responsive, they're they're right there. But uh I I I kind of chuckled there because I just had a lengthy conversation with county council member Young about this. And uh I think we'll probably have to take a look at at adding Narcan in cars, yeah, it's, it seems pretty cop group, if you will. You know, I was worried about liabilities and uh misuse of it, although as I understand it now, you really can't screw it up.
That's my understanding too.
Right.
Anybody can get it.
Right, yeah, yeah, there's a vending machine right.
No, I don't have it, anybody can go into a pharmacy.
Right, so I think that we'll.
I think the deputy, the sheriff deputies are. I had a question too.
Yes.
I've heard about license plate readers, like automatic readers, and with the amount of car thefts we've had, is that something that you've looked into or had any interest in?
Um we haven't, um we could, um I will tell you that with the current state of the laws, that we can't chase stolen cars. It's kind of moot, um all of our uh professional shoplifters, as I'll call them now, are removing the license plates from their cars, we're switching the license plates. So not a ton of value yet, uh we have our eyes on the legislative session, we don't need to have that conversation right now. But uh if they if they alter the pursuit law and and make. Catching bad guys legal again, then uh we may, we may look at those sorts of technologies, I'll also say that looking back, several councils that have been associated with. Um the appearance of Big Brother was never popular, right, red light cameras, uh just even monitor cameras at the. Egress points to our city has never been very popular, so. Um if there's a change in that attitude, I I'm quite interested in using technology to our benefit.
I know some like in parking lots, so the officer can just drive through and not have to like, you know, identify a car that looks stolen, which, you know, really is subjective and.
But then what what we can do with them at that point is what's, you know, online, so.
So you're saying council wasn't, didn't like the Big Brother aspect? What, and now it seems like you're advocating, maybe if we, we were open to it, then you would be as well, then uh what is the citizenry thinking?
That I would turn that right back to you and you tell me what your citizens are telling you, I know that uh. When we introduced the notion of red light cameras, for instance, at a couple of intersections, the next question asked is, where's the data? Right, uh Olympic and Point Pastic, every light cycle, two or three cars running the red light, we know this, right? It's a really hard intersection for us to work without a motorcycle. Um so we thought, okay, red light cameras, but we have no collision data there, there's, it's it's, what problem are we solving? And so then citizens say, oh, it's just a money man, right?
Yeah.
It can be lucrative to help fund our police department, but.
The citizenry is getting. Less and less, they don't want to tolerate crime as much, so I think they might be more open foot and. Maybe people on council would be as well, if the overall result would be in lowering crime, then I think this council would be.
We don't have time for a big discussion in it, but I know that on the east coast, it's very fashionable for cities to have. Uh video monitors, if you will, throughout e-locations in their high crime areas and then egress points to their cities. And they actually have dispatchers in their dispatch center that are assigned to video.
It might be as caught if.
I had a question about, I know there's mal-house, you know, issues becoming more and more common, or, you know, part of some of your calls. Um. What you believe the available resources, are they, you know, is it enough for you? Do you want more assistance with mal-house, I mean, what do you feel, you know, like?
Yes, 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 and yes, yeah, if you want to reduce crime right now and and open up our jails, we're going to tighten up the drug laws and we're going to get mental health assistance. Yeah, you must be coming to your mouth with calendar because I'm speaking, it's a Pierce County group next week about. So uh, yeah, that's that's a, that's a whole, again, a whole other discussion we could have, and I would invite that conversation. There's definitely a need to improve resources and perhaps tweaking some laws.
Okay. Kelly, on the same, kind of on the same line of question. You mentioned homeless support, you got a big zero, you know, because you didn't have time to do it.
That one was a question mark.
Oh, that's, oh, I thought it was the one that had the. You've got a big question mark, okay, what, do you feel like you need more or?
I I don't know how to describe it, maybe a wait-and-see approach sort of thing, so I'll tell you this, that every time our officers come in contact with. Uh a homeless person, whether it be a call for service or they see a need, you know, right, they will offer them services one hundred percent of the time. And I'll tell you that ninety-five percent of the time, they don't take, they don't take those services. So now, without focusing, you're targeting people, um are they breaking laws, what are they doing, you know, we enforce the past laws. We have a business or uh this property owner that says, hey, I don't want these people here, that's fine, we'll enforce your trespass laws. Um I I don't think that we're being overrun, uh we certainly see an increase in people, you see that yourself as you drive around.
Well, I'm starting to get lots of emails about it too, and hear from people that they are coming, which just bothers me too, but.
Right. We are then, about a year and a half ago, we were talking about about a contingency plan of.
I guess that's kind of what I'm wondering.
So those those plans are on the nearby shelf, you know, that's that's nothing that we couldn't activate fairly soon, but right now, I don't, I don't know that. We're there yet.
Okay.
You're on rise.
You were saying you don't respond to it uh as much, but I can say that uh when they do, they're very empathetic. Uh they've gone above and beyond, you know, the only resources for homeless are in Tacoma or Bremerton. These officers have actually driven you.
Oh, right, yeah, that's common.
On their own.
Large volunteer group that's going to be doing a count this week, I think on Thursday. Um in, I think the greater Good Harbor Heat Insula area, so they've assured me that they'll send me numbers when they get that. And of course, I think they would share them with TBC as well.
I saw that as well.
Yeah, so we'll kind of see what that, not that it would change anything that our officers are doing at this point in time, but at least we would know. Like how many and where, what areas are.
And they're tricky, because you can have people capture from the top of the hour.
Right, I'll forge ahead here.
Oh, wait, I have a quick question, so when you get four new folks, they get on board. Is that enough to maybe start improving your bicycle and?
Yes, yeah, so the T, I mean, if we can, we can substitute that for a bicycle a day or two, you know, sort of something like that. Um I'll I'll tell you too, uh that it it's going to be hard to reach this number.
Yeah.
Because we know of at least two that will be retiring for six months of the year, at least two. Um. So i- in today's hiring and and retention period, it's tough, I if we if we achieve that, I get a big high five. Right, so and and all of our department does.
Yeah, lots of data.
Any requests for like signing bonuses or anything?
A whole other theory, a whole other theory on that, we're in negotiations right now, so maybe I should probably not comment on that, but.
You may be getting to a compared to our value improvement, but you were saying that you might bring some officers. Or in an entry level, correct, which is a change from what we've done, just because of the time required, so is that still your thinking?
It is, I would like to see a mix of that, so we need to get younger as a department, and uh there's, there's a call up in from our officers, and rightfully so. That we want to develop the officers our way, we do things a little different here, it's kind of hard to describe. But we don't get the citizen complaints, we get the empathy, we, we go the extra mile to, to help service people. And we want to, we want to pass that on, I guess, to the next generation of cops, and so, yeah, a mix of uh entry level and lateral. Probably best person available at that moment. Good question, uh I'll, I'll speed up just a little bit here, so I don't take my peers' times too much. Uh this is what a patrol schedule would look like in theory, okay, these are all of our officers, they work three twelve and a half hour shifts per week. Right, three days on, four days off, and then one day per month, they have to work a ten hour shift. Right, the, the goal there, i- it's been hard to, to achieve is to use that ten hour shift for training, but we've been using it for shift coverage. So this is the goal, this is in a perfect world, if nobody ever took a day off or called in sick. Here is reality, this is from last July, the white spaces are when people are off. Uh the green spaces, it's hard to tell on the screen, our people have adjusted shifts to help with coverage. You'll see that there, that's hard to pick out the, the three purple squares on there, but very little overtime involved, but. You know, all it takes is one or two people to call in sick and we're just thrown uh from, let's use one e- example here of July fifteenth. And believe me, I could have picked several days from this month to demonstrate this, but we're going to pick that day, okay? So we know that our calls for service, this is a rolling uh twenty-four month average of calls per service by day and hour. We can see that uh Fridays and Saturdays uh up in the upper corner here, our busy, Friday, Saturday evenings are busiest times of the week, right? But here's what happened on that particular day, on our busiest times, we had to be either two or three officers on at any time for that twenty-four hour period, and that's not enough. Right, ultimately, we shoot for five people on on Friday nights, that's unsafe, um and it's, it's not working, and we're starting to get overrun. So. That's just one way of illustrating that, let me move over to vehicles here for a moment. Uh ignore the column on the left, that's just the, the vehicle identifying number, like the thirty-one and the thirty-two, that's how we keep track of them. But this is our fleet, are largely our patrol and detective fleet of vehicles right now. Uh again, we have some that are in service and patrol back to two thousand thirteen. So what we have is two from the twenty-two budget that are on order still, I um communicated through city administrator Newson that. Uh last council meeting, patrol vehicles are very hard to get, they're taking eight months or more, it's crazy. Uh so we've ordered a couple, our back is February, that still aren't here, those are the two that were in the budget, remember, we had a couple that were destroyed this year. Uh we got paid out on those uh from our, from the insurance, uh and that money does not go back in our budget, goes to general fund. Um and then uh with your uh authority last council meeting, we discovered that there was two vehicles we could pick off the production line. Uh and you authorized the purchase of that, we happen to have the budget capacity this year, so we were able to snag two vehicles in production later this month. Yeah, that was a, that was a nice tip I got from the people that out there are vehicles. So what's going to happen to these vehicles, the first uh two that we get are going to replace two existing cars, the, the oldest of the two. Those are going to go to pool, we have two pool cars that we keep handy for if a car gets wrecked or needs repair or whatever, those are kind of our standby. Still serviceable, but not great patrol vehicles, so those are going to, to the pool fleet. Then the next two um will replace our other two oldest in the fleet, we've identified vehicles ninety and ninety-two is the ones that we're going to be replacing. But then we recycle those into our pops volunteers cars, right? So that the two thousand six sport Victoria's are in really bad shape right now, they're embarrassing. And uh borderline, borderline unsafe, right, frankly, so uh we'll, we'll take those cars and they'll become our cops volunteers cars. You know how good that program is. So then, and what remains for the budget for the next two years would be these four vehicles, uh and yes, we'll lean towards hybrids or electric when we can. Um and then in the twenty-four portion of that would be these other two vehicles, that would again replace the oldest vehicles as they age out. So there's the plan for the vehicles. Training, uh I mentioned that we have a lot of more mandatory training than we ever had before. Um crisis intervention is big, patrol tactics are trying to standardize every police officer in the state, the way they respond to calls. Active shooter range, legal updates, all that kind of stuff, we have a twenty-four hour mandate, each officer has to receive a minimum of twenty-four hours. Of formal training per year, we blow that away, just with going to the range even, right? So um we're in compliance with that, uh there is a big emphasis on scenario based training now, they don't want just classroom stuff. They want hands-on in the environments that you work in, if you work at dark, you're going to go shoot in the dark, if you're going to make judgmental shooting decisions. That has to be in those environments, so um big emphasis on that, I mentioned how we host training, try to defer some of the expenses. And we've developed uh more in-house instructors, so we can train our own, and we actually farm out some of our people at other agencies, and, and we'll borrow their instructors too. So that's mutually beneficial. One of the things that uh I, I forget what the, the capital threshold was that you wanted to be, have reported here, I don't think we have anything other than vehicles that rises to that level. But a couple of things I did want to mention, that we want to get a, a hold of a firearms training simulator for that scenario based training. This is a, just one of several products out there, I think this is made by Dart. And the one, the reason I like this particular one, see the guy in the upper left, he's some defensive tactics and use of force expert in the nation. He'll come on the screen, give a little lesson on, here's a situation, let's talk about, let's talk about the legalities and the tactic, and then they run scenarios on that. And, and you're actually interacting with the screen, I think those of you that have been through the Citizens Academy, I played with a, a more crude version of this. We can design our own scenarios, and so i- it's portable, it's, this is a, a pretty good deal, I think that's about thirteen thousand dollars, so that's in the budget. Other things, we talked about radios and how South Sound nine-one-one will likely help us defer some of our replacement expenses. The middle picture there is just a, a camera, we have cameras in our Sallyport, our garage area and our um jail area where we process DUIs. And stuff like that, those cameras melted down years and years ago, and I wasn't in a big hurry to replace them because. Uh we were getting so many public records requests and, and requests for discovery from defense attorneys. Because we have state patrol coming in there, we have county coming in there, and we were handling all that, we didn't have time to do it, so when the camera broke, we didn't replace. Kind of exposing ourselves a little bit to false claims, right? So uh we want to replace those cameras, uh that is in the uh budget package too. Uh I, I do believe that yearly, our MSA comes out with a grant um program that we can apply for to defer some of that cost. If it reduces our exposure, so we'll put in for that, and then on the right, uh our ballistic shields, we only have two of those in the whole department right now. Uh they're over ten years old, the lifespan is supposed to be five years, the two that we have are only rated for handguns. Uh we've put in the budget to request five, so we can have four deployed in, in the field, one in each patrol sergeant's vehicle. And then one at the station, and they're rifle resistant too. Um they're very expensive, they're about five thousand dollars apiece, we need those more than ever. Uh we do have an active grant application right now with Homeland Security that help pay for some or all of it, so hopefully we can get that, that appears in the budget right now too.
One of them worked pretty well with the meat golf.
Lastly, uh our patrol boat uh needs a little bit of refreshing, so in two thousand seven, we bought this boat with uh a help of a Homeland Security grant. And it was written as a fifteen-year boat with engines replaced at half-life, so we're at, we're at the end of that fifteen years. And we did replace the engines through a grant at its half-life, but we're not ready to throw the boat away, I think the boat's still okay, just needs some updating. We need to replace all of that black non-ski you see, the fire pump has totally corroded and seized up, and, and there's a couple of other things that we need to do. In the neighborhood of twenty, twenty-two thousand dollars, so uh that is kind of buried into the budget too, so.
That things that can be done ultimately, or?
Yeah, safe boats are manufactured in Gorch, yeah, so we just take them back to the factory, get a quote from them, and they should be able to freshen it up. And so sending this boat to replace now would be probably three hundred thousand dollars. Yeah, we're not going to do that, let's spend the twenty-something and extend life for the private engine, so. With that, any other remaining questions?
Looks good.
Okay.
Thank you for everything you've done, Steve.
Thank you for your support.
And even with on the dollar.
Yes, hilarious.
Yeah.
Very clever.
All right.
Thanks very much.
Thank you so much. Uh so moving on to community development, we have a building, we've got a criminal, fire marshal, Paul Rice, and our community. Our um. The lead official fire. Yes, and principal planner, I was trying to say principal and Carl at the same time, and that's. Yeah, Tom, that's really. Harold and Steven's principal planner, thank you, thank you for the assistance there. Yeah, we'll give you a second to kind of train and transfer over here.
Smoke mirrors, no.
You can just, every time you have.
Okay, so I'm leaving, Mayor Council, um Carl and I are going to kind of tag team the community development portion of the. Budget workshop session here, I'm going to be taking the uh building and fire division's comments, Carl's going to handle the planning. And uh.
Just makes sense, we reverse it.
We should mix it up.
And if you can let us know what page you're on as you.
So uh, yeah, starting on page twenty-nine, uh as far as the, what we do portion, uh the building and fire division. Um just kind of a quick snapshot, um we are all about uh education, um both internally. With credentialing and um educational opportunities for our staff as well as externally. Um in Washington State, there's no testing educational requirements to be a, a licensed general contractor. So most anything that a contractor may know, uh will come, having to do with health, life safety codes. Will come from your inspection staff, uh which is a bit challenging at times, uh yeah, it can be.
Everybody else has to get licensed, yeah.
So, building fire division is responsible for inspection and construction of all new and remodeled structures within the city limits. Um that's kind of the core of what we do, uh we enforce the building, uh fire, coming mechanical energy and accessible codes. And that's kind of the core, meat and potatoes, um additionally, we also review all city business licenses for compliance and make an initial business license inspection. Uh we review all special use and special commitments and make any inspections that are required for those type of activities. The division also reviews all civil and planning permits for compliance with the building and fire codes as well. Our division manages the department's um electronic planner review program as well. As additionally, our um permit portal and permit tracking software throughout the entire community of the division is handled. Primarily through the building and fire safety division, uh that program's called SmartCo, we've heard that a little bit later. We also have all the addressing and street naming with business of limits, uh as far as permitting. Um so far this year, we've issued about nine hundred permits, um including those for a hundred and twenty-five uh new single family homes. So that's kind of where we are as far as our workload, um we're currently managing a little over three thousand active permits. And the, just in the building division. We performed over sixty-five hundred inspections this year, which is about eleven and a half percent. Over last year's, and we finalized uh nine hundred um projects, um including the Vishnu Bank. Uh Swiftwater Elementary, North Harbor Business Park eighty-nine, um Chipotle, Mexican Girl. Partners at Scansy Park, which was a hundred and ninety, hundred and eighty-nine homes and a clubhouse. The Heritage Stillery, Barrel Storage Facility, and many, many more. Um as far as some of the special projects um that we worked on in the past, we've had. Just cleared it out, that we've had some staffing challenges over the last, say, four years, I remember a couple of people have. Retired, I was building the vision, and we've had one, two, three that have left for um. Reader pastors, so, um we've had a lot of, and it always, that takes a hit on the department, you know, having to retrain. As Kelly mentioned, you know, they don't take on a lot of newer people, um we've had to, we've had to take on new people, because we're not getting a lot of lateral. Interests uh in our, in our area. Some of the projects that we have worked on uh with this last year, uh as you know, the uh fireworks ordinance updates. We've completed implementation of a re-incurring inspection module in SmartCo, um that's within collaboration with Fire Easter Five. To bring in uh our annual fire inspection program into our in-house tracking system, which is, has been extremely. Um efficient, as well as allows a lot, uh great, great transparency, and um. Which is always, you know, the topic of everybody's last, I know they're used to it, right? Um we've also been able to maintain a lot of our um stakeholders, the relationships with some of our. Folks like uh Master Builders Association, um keeping, keeping those, you know, positive relationships going with them. Really important um for us, um this next year, as far as our goals, next year's a code cycle. Which basically the state adopts every three years, a whole new set of uh construction codes. And for us, we need to review those for um any uh requirement of. Uh implementation, any um amendments to our municipal code that need to be made. At applicability consistency with our local ordinances, it's, it's kind of a, a large project, uh the state building code consists of. Uh thirty-four hundred pages of code with five thousand pages of state amendments. So it's, we take it, you know, little chunks at a time, we distribute it, you know, we work on it uh as a team. But it is a, a pretty daunting project at times, but we'll, we will absolutely have that taken care of typically. By July of next year. As far as, as budget items, um our division, we really don't have any big asks, we, we've got enough, uh I believe we don't have vehicles and. Staffing already on the books and to accommodate this next year as well as next following year, if not even further than that. I do want to thank you, I know it's in, it's in the budget for accomplishments for this last year, but our, our code enforcement officer. Um having him on full time, it's just been a real blessing. Our, the building division has always been very proactive when it comes to code enforcement, you know, when. As mentioned earlier today, you know, see something, say something, well, we look for things, um we, we don't, if you let one, one thing go, the neighbor sees it. And they know, well, they get to do this a lot, you know, and that whole, the whole snowball effect, so we try to cut that off quickly. Somebody's working without permits, we stop, say, let you know that, and this work, and we'll help you and, and kind of create a good and positive relationship. With people before they get too far along, and then it becomes, you know, oh, I'm sorry, you have to tear it down, right, you go from setback, or it wasn't allowed, or. There's only code or something like that, so um having, having cattle on board full time, um takes a little bit more of the. Distress off the, the building team, you know, we always handle that in-house. Someone for that. I think that's pretty much all I have for building and fire, if you have any questions for me, I'd be more than happy to.
Just a quick question, the personnel, you got what, seven people under your?
Actually, um in the budget, it shows four inspectors, we actually only have three.
So one, one of those is a vacancy.
We actually don't really need to fill that position, to be honest with you, it's not on the primary work chart. We actually don't really need to fill that position, to be honest with you. It's not on the primary work charts at the beginning of the budget. See it down on page thirty-two.
Correct. One of those should be.
It was approved in last year's budget. We never filled it. We just really didn't. It was, it was, it was a challenge to get staffing. I mean, one position, we went through a process, we went through tried to hire four different individuals for the position and we weren't able to get any of them to actually follow through. And council, one of them, you had even approved a top staff, one of those individuals, and they still went to work for another jurisdiction. Our wages are a challenge right now, especially for building inspectors. We've been, we're working against Pierce County, it's eleven thousand dollars more and they work on the other side of the street, right? You know, the other side of Soundview, so. And it's not just us. It's, it's all, one of our inspectors that just recently left wants to work with Bonnie Lake and I called the city manager of Bonnie Lake, a friend, and he said, yeah, we had hired an inspector who stayed with us for three days and then went to work for another jurisdiction. And so, they, you know, he felt bad about kind of, you know, taking one of our guys, but they had no one, so. It's, it's a challenge in our entire region right now. There's, you mentioned that Kelly, the signing bonuses, you know, there's many jurisdictions will offer ten, fifteen thousand dollar signing bonuses for inspectors right now. It's tough. Right now, we have a new inspector backfill. He started on Monday. He's coming from Montana. Last two inspectors, I believe, we hired one from, well, we hired two from California that have come up that are on our team right now. People are just coming from the state locally. We're not getting, you know, there's not a lot of jurisdiction. So, looking at your crystal ball of the years twenty-three and four, think that you're okay with the staffing. I think so. If we get him to stay, it'll be a bigger surprise. I think we'll be fine.
Are we looking, or I'm not sure, this is probably party union negotiations, but are we looking at making sure that our salary, we're doing a salary in that one?
We're doing a salary. We're conducting a salary study next, next year.
Okay, and that's on all positions across.
Correct. One of the, one of the things, and in eliminating one of the four building inspectors, and that was done in conference with Paul and Carl through Dave, is looking out long-term, as we've talked about in our meetings, about some of the larger plots. We don't really have a lot of the larger ones, and so we want to be able to right-size the staff, which this will allow us to do. And as Dave mentioned in the weekly update, in our last weekly update development, the revenues are down thirty percent over last year for the same time. And so, we want to make sure that we're staffing appropriately for the work that we have and putting, you know, potential FTE money elsewhere if it's needed somewhere else. So, I really appreciate Paul and Carl, you know, coming together and especially Paul noting that he can get the work done with the division. Once he's fully staffed and they're up to speed and, and trained with the three building inspectors.
Our fees, they don't typically go along with the number of applications we have. You may have one permit, like Costco or the hospital, right? Or you have one house and it, the fees are obviously, you know, much, much difference.
We've had a lot in years past, as Dave knows, because of the one-offs, right? A lot of those big, big projects that bring in, you know, large permit fees. Recently, it's been the big plots, where we have just a lot of homes, a lot of single-family homes and billing permit fees aren't, you know, these giant, giant numbers. They are labor-intensive though, and a lot of inspections for a house and typically average between eighteen and twenty-five, essentially a square house. So. Yeah, the work, the work is there. We just, you know, trying to find the nexus between how much money needs learned in and the amount of work isn't proportionate a lot of the time, so.
Thank you so much, Paul. Appreciate it.
So, for planning, I would like to start on page thirty-one if I could, just kind of start into the, into the highlights. I'm sorry, page thirty-one. Twenty-twenty-two highlights, and Paul hit on a few of these already because these are, you know, are overlapping here with the divisions, because we're just, we're in community development. But I just wanted to highlight a few of the things that planning division worked on this year and, and completed our Shoreline Master Program update. We finally completed that and started that project in two thousand and nineteen. So, that took a little bit of time. We, we got it done and we got gold stars to use the Kelly's, I wish I had something.
But no donuts.
Yeah, donut. Really, we really did get who goes for what, for the Shoreline Master Program and what we did. So, that's, that's pretty exciting. We were kicking off the twenty-twenty-four Conference of Plan periodic update. There'll be a little bit more on that. That's, that's going to be my world probably for the next couple of years, I think. It's a big one. Really, really excited about it, really looking forward to it. We got some grant money from the state on that and we're proposing in the budget some matching funds. If not, it's not a matching grant, but we're just proposing some funds put into it. We closed the request for proposals yesterday. We have three proposals in from consultants to help us out with that, which is, I think, more than some other jurisdictions can say. So, I feel pretty lucky about that. We actually have choices. So, we're excited. So, we'll be reviewing those this week and then interviewing those consultants here in the coming weeks. So, very exciting. We, we did the urban growth area assessment and guidelines. Some of you will remember that. We're going to be bringing that back to you before the year's end here for adoption by resolution. That's a really great document. It turned out fantastic. I'm super proud of it. We it will help us out a lot in this periodic update and I think it will help council, this council and future councils in the student-making process is what we're talking about, urban growth areas. It's really a fantastic document. And we've gotten, we've written for and been awarded several grants to help us out. Mostly, this will be helping us out with periodic update. But relative to climate change and, and climate action planning, which is a hot topic and something that we are a little bit behind on and need to get caught up on, and this is going to, the grant's going to help us out a lot. We've pulled together some groups to look at climate change. We are processing an amendment this year, as, as you might know, in the twenty-twenty-two comp plan update to get some climate change policies and goals back into the comp plan that will support a climate action plan. And so, we'll be getting going on that next year. Really excited. Urban Forest Management, we've gotten some grant money for that, middle housing, which housing force is a really, really hot button topic and really a focus in this periodic update. So, we've gotten some, some grant money to work on a housing needs assessment. We have a consultant onboard, Community Attributes Incorporated, which is a lot of this work. We've already started that process with them and we also got a grant from Commerce that we pooled with some other jurisdictions and give it to SHAPE. SHAPE, I think it's about a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars plus forty thousand, we're not that into to bring in a consultant that SHAPE will manage, but we will reap the benefits of, and we will also be a part of the process. So, it's, that's going to be a really cool process. That will get into the middle housing and will feed into our, our comp plan update. And then, of course, twenty-twenty-four comp plan, I already touched on that. You kicked off this how the needs assessment. I already said that, sorry. Another exciting thing we did this year was get a city arborist onboard. So, we've got Davy Resource Group onboard as our city arborist and we've, we've kind of dipped our toe into the water of figuring out how to use them. It's something new for us. And so, we're trying to figure out what the policy and process is to utilize them because we don't want to make it arduous for somebody who wants to take down an obviously diseased tree, you know. So, we're trying to figure out exactly when do we employ the city arborist. So, we're working on policy and kind of playing around with that a little bit, working with Davy. They work with other jurisdictions. They're giving us some advice on how best to utilize them. But we'll really have that in full, full speed ahead next year. I think it's going to be really great to have a an arborist onboard. And along with that, we have the Urban Forest Management Plan kicked off and we're also working with Davy Resource Group on that. Going to be an awesome document, the first one that we've ever had here at the city. It's going to really help inform our, how we manage our forest, our, our canopy in Gig Harbor. And this will also help inform policies. It will help inform probably some changes to our code and design manual and hopefully take out some of that gray area that we've been dealing with for a long time. So, we're really looking forward to that. And that's already been kicked off. Davy's already started interviews with stakeholders and they've, they've got a little bit of foothold on, on moving that forward. So, that's, that's really great stuff. So. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Last year, I think we talked about taking a look at what the penalties are for people that are clear-cut without permits. Because once they're gone, the trees are gone and a five hundred dollar penalty does nothing if somebody, they just don't care. So, where are we with that and where is that part of it?
That will be part of this, but we're also planning to come back to council with some recommendations, some suggestions. So, Adam Blodgett, he's now the code enforcement, code compliance officer. He's been working on pulling together a table of where all of our civil penalties are in the code and what they are and what they're related to. They're spread throughout the code and I think we kind of tried to describe that to y'all. We, we came and spoke to you about code compliance before. He's trying to consolidate that into something that we can kind of grab onto and actually see what all of these things are. And then look at what other jurisdictions are doing and then come back and make some recommendations on what you think you could do now. Now, the Urban Forest Management Plan might inform that as well, or should inform that as well. And then we could, you know, we can make changes again, or maybe, maybe it just happens to line up or we actually make those good changes. But we are looking at it currently.
Hopefully, we get that done, you know, within a reasonable timeframe. Because I know, I think this year, we had two incidents of some significant clearcutting and and we can find them, but the trees are gone and that, that's the problem. We don't want the money. We want the trees back.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, I, I think the Urban Forest Management Program is really going to help out with that big time. But like I said, in the interim, we can certainly put something in place just to.
I would support that highly just because we don't have time to read. I'm happy to hear that we're, we're moving on fast.
We are.
I was worried it was going to be in twenty-four comp plan update.
No.
It's going to be done until twenty-twenty-five.
Right. Now, we're planning on bringing something back to you in November, actually. We'll have some recommendations and then I get some direction.
An interim finding.
Okay, well, that's what we're working towards.
We'll do it with Kelly. We're touring and we're done, Dave, in terms of time, please.
Yeah, just going to highlight to the funding that you're requesting.
Thirteen minutes and two more departments to go. And no, 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 any questions from council that can wait till November third or be sent in an email, that would be great just for perspective, for its time and the judge's time and trying to end this most.
So, I'll, I'll just skip then. On page thirty, we start out into the mayor department's supportive objectives and I kind of touched on those a little bit, the climate action plan, middle housing. These are all grant-supported, but they will require some, some funding as well. And so, that, those asks are embedded in the in this, this budget, this biennial budget, the twenty-twenty-four comp plan, that's, that's going to be the big, probably the biggest ticket item, but that's, you know, that's a big one. It's going to be two years and, and in fact, what we're hearing from other jurisdictions is that they're, they're spending quite a bit more money, depending on the jurisdiction, but a lot of them are spending a lot more money. We think that we can get it done with this three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we're asking for here. And again, that's one hundred and twenty-five coming from Commerce. So, I think that's, I think that's a good number and I guess that remains to be seen for sure. But what we're hearing from consultants so far is it looks like they can get it done for that. At least they're proposing. And then the Urban Forest Management Plan, of course. And so, again, like I said, these are all grant-funded for the Urban Forest Management Plan. We have a little bit of money from the previous budget that's rolling over into that as well. So, it's a little less of a, little less hit on the, on the budget too, but. And then I'll just throw out there, in, in the budget, we're also we're asking for a term limited planner for two years to help us out with the comp plan. And we also have an electric vehicle ask in the, in the budget as well. It could be the city's first electric vehicle. So, we want, planning wants to lead the way on that. Sorry, Paul. That's all. And then, that's all I have in the interest of time, but happy if you have any quick questions, I could, I could write them down and make sure and answer them for you on November third.
Would they have access to it? There's going to be some like to into a, on the call grant, right?
Yes. And then we started that three hundred and fifty thousand, you will call from Jeff's presentation yesterday about the transportation element update. That money will also be utilized and across departments will coordinated effort for the comp plan to update the capital facilities plans to include the transportation element.
Thanks, Dan. Thank you very much.
And good job targeting your church.
Oh, thanks. We placed on last night.
Great. You too. Okay, we'll move on to tourism communications. I've let Laura know, well, she's aware of our time constraint as well. Anything that, you know, we can ship to November third or that Laura might want to address on November third and so today we might ship some of that around.
We do have a longer study session for, so, full, full in-depth questions and data can be presented. I believe I start on forty, forty-nine. There's two real components and of course, that's communications and then tourism as well. And we do provide just a high-level overview, communications accomplishments over the past year or so, especially modifying based on our, our new needs and our new leadership and administration, shifting and pivoting to things that work well, including, you know, bringing back the gigabyte, not just on a monthly format, but on a weekly basis to have regular and consistent communications on what's happening throughout town as well as making it a vehicle for the mayor to provide thoughts on what's happening throughout the city and getting more informed and engage others. We've also done a number of events, so we are celebrating so many things that are coming to fruition finally, and we're very proud of those over the last few months. When we head into our highlights from twenty-two and tourism, what is most part of is really looking at the data and seeing what's really driving numbers, what's driving tourism, what's driving people here. As you know, our metrics from some of the, the LTAC fund guidance have been to increase tourism from over fifty miles away and increase the working states. So, taking a look at our lodging tax pace chart is something that I've taken a really deep look into over the past five years. So, I measure what's coming in each month from attack and how that faces over the past five years, both from an average and obviously because twenty and twenty-one were such different years. We take an average and we also look at how we're performing based on our performance in seventeen, eighteen and nineteen. And I'm happy to report that we average out at about hundred and fifty, hundred and twenty-five percent. This past month in May of twenty-twenty-two, we were at a hundred and sixty-one point four seven percent, pacing ahead of usual. So, that's, that's a pretty strong number and good amount of recovery. And obviously, a great recovery. We've put a lot of effort into how we get people back in person and doing the things that they used to love to do and encouraging that audience as well. So, one of the biggest things to, that we ever took when, when I came into this role and what we continue to do is rebuild our photo library and rebuild our assets, most of which were dated and aged and some were taken with a two thousand and four point and shoot camera. So, we've engaged a lot of our users to source really great user-generated content and be efficient with our costs and our tourism advertising dollars. As you know, a picture is worth a thousand words. And so, we've engaged local photographers, people of town and also people who are sharing things on small groups, like why we live Gig Harbor in order to really capture all the things that we can't solely do as a department. So, we're really excited because that really tells our story. And as we know, media is a very quickly changing landscape and we want to make sure that we're telling stories and putting content out there that resonates with the audience, that we've done so much research to find out who they are, what they're enjoying and, and what might resonate with them. We executed about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in LTAC grants for external events, which is more than we had in the past years. We did a really strong campaign that, that looked out to, to see who, who those funds might apply to, who might be good recipients. And we really increased our publicity in how we encourage. And we really increased our publicity in how we encourage people to apply for those. And those can be, those numbers can be seen and measured when we go a little bit deeper on November third, too. So we really also took a look at our digital campaigns. We we really dove deep into the data of who is coming here, what they look like, where they're coming from, what their habits are and how we can reach that, how we can reach people further down in the funnel to to move forward. We have our event description metadata, so you can find that on Google a lot easier. We purchase Google ads that were seen in more places and we're targeted for retargeting people who have visited us before or found other interests that are similar to ours. For summer sounds, we reached into attendance level and then we brought in new downtown vendors to go ahead and enhance those experiences and reach the brand and make sure that we saw a great amount of return on that. Summer sounds was from our data by data, one of our best performing events and bringing people over fifty miles away. So it was a whole lot of fun. We also took a look at efficiency and scaled back on our movies in the park, partnering with Penn Net in order to host them in general and make sure that our efforts are really going to things that show ROI. And some of our events, while valuable, maybe have more of a community and give enrichment experience. So we took a hard look at that. We've also designed a lot of our collateral, including our wildly popular tear off maps in order to take those in house and make sure they're correct and they're distributed to our partners in a timely manner. And we're able to adjust those and show real new businesses that are coming online rather than having dated material that stays out there for ten to twelve years. So those are a couple of the things that we've worked really hard to do is to accurately reflect who we are as a city and put those materials out to a receptive audience and then measure our our engagement and return. We also funded a record number of nonprofit operations and events in our need period, well, in our over seasons, March, and then throughout summer and then in throughout October. So we outpaced those grants by nearly double. And as you can see, there's a long list of those and we can go through those maybe in a little further depth on November third. Coming up in twenty three and twenty four, our continued measurement of success is important. We're looking at, we're looking at that number of lodging tax and how we grow that. And that's our real metric of success. And so that number growing, are we getting heads and beds? And are we replenishing the fund in a way where we can continue to spend more and more and see that growth move forward? Our goals are to self publish the twenty twenty three and twenty four visitors guide and increase our advertising intake from that. We're going to return to a distribution on Washington State Currys and Sea Tacking National Airport, which we've been missing in the past. We've created a database of reciprocal agreements with other cities where there are similar audiences that may be interested in what it has to offer and not as familiar with our destination. And we're looking to mail to a growing list of big harbor addresses and how that how that goes forward. We're not exactly sure whether that's a quarterly send or whether that's a send of the annual publication. But we know that people respond to hard materials as well. People are digital and they see it again and again, but there's there's something about that hard material that really, really helps the message go further. We're also looking at what it takes to become a holiday draw. And that goes for the city in total, not just our downtown, but how do we get people in through the month of December? How do we get people patronizing our swamp businesses? How do we get people to book a weekend stay and come enjoy our city in a time where we see a diminished amount of traffic? In our twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four goals, we are also looking at interactive art campaigns and how how we get people to create content on our behalf. So it's not just us putting out the story, but our citizens, residents and their guests also doing the same. We are looking at with the assistance of the city committee, engaging a branding firm to renew city signage, external materials, creating a brand guideline, updating logo color and fonts and all of those things that reflect who we are as a city as a as a high end destination for not just visitors in the immediate region, but from further afar as well. So that that kind of leads into whether what our LTAC grant program looks like and what kind of funding we're going to look at for those events. We are continuing on a long range to try to figure out how we tell our story as a food and wine destination. And by food and wine, I mean distilleries, breweries, wineries, everything to drink, which is essentially the new story of Harvard Beach Bay. So we're going to, we're going to really try to push that and encourage people to come here and experience the unique experience of the digger grass to offer. We're also looking to create those off season outdoor itineraries to increase our hotel, RV and SDR bookings in the shoulder of off season and keep that fund growing as well. So those are our opportunities both within creating demand in our already high value areas to raise rates and then also creating demand in those off season, shoulder season areas. We're also looking to produce and distribute a visitor's guide that's profitable and delivers some back to the lodging tax fund in order to increase our ad spend and re divert those funds into performing well for us in other ways. So that's a little bit of where we're at and very, very open to questions. And I know we've compiled a good amount of data on performance metrics of of where this fund is working well and where we perhaps have some opportunities that we can dive a little bit further into on November third. Our geo fencing and data partner and our digital advertising campaign partner Data Five has pulled some really interesting data that shows the correlations between people who attend events specifically on a date and price frame and people who are also seen in our hotels. There's also correlation measurement between who is attending events from over fifty miles away. And that goes from every venue that has operations covered throughout the year to a one day event, you know, uptown for a celebration. So we can pull those numbers and be informed in our data and then make decisions that that show what moves them. So I'm I'm excited to share a little bit further with you on November third, but yes.
I have one question that I haven't given for those people who may have to. On your department request, you have one point, almost one point four million dollars in services, which is a huge jump. Can you just explain what that jump is?
Sure. Over two years, so it's about five fifty per year. Last year's ask was four ninety five. So we are, we're pacing a little bit ahead there and we're looking to enrich both the digital advertising campaign. But then also in the way that we budget, what we have to do is anticipate that we're not going to get those sponsorships and advertising dollars that we know will come in. So in order to spend it, it has to be in there. And we're hoping to supplement a large amount of that, let's say a seventy thousand dollar advertising campaign through those sponsorships that we're not advertising or sponsor our summer sound series and create income and offset our spend there.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you. And as Laura said, that we'll have a dedicated hour on the third to talk about LTAC applications and rankings and proposals. And so you'll get a lot more time with Laura on that.
And riding back to just the other side of things as well, on the communication side, I know there's a inclusion of fifty thousand dollars for the strategic communications plan, which is crucial. And also just setting our goals and making sure that we align well with your strategic goals and mission and and the city's plan for the next two years.
And we also talked about potential for a tour from July, which we might be want to talk about again.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Very, very well for that.
Thanks for hanging on with us.
As always, receptive to questions through email, through phone.
I think we definitely have a lot we wanted to ask you about, but we'll put it off till the third.
We can go very in depth on that.
Here we go. Full hour.
Yes. We have, we have really fun things to to look into, too, and data responses and and numbers. So it is our friend, measurement is always our friend. And, you know, it's important in many marketing campaigns to take a look at that deeply and see what's going on. Thank you very much.
So we're going to move on to court and then we we discovered that HR was lacking on this agenda. So we would like to add HR after court and maybe after court, we'll do like a one minute stretch and then we'll have HR come and present theirs. So but it's a good news story. Why? Because we, HR, we're having it be separate from administration, which is healthy to have that. And so I think it's been the past few years, HR was presenting with the administration under the administration budget. Right. So we apologize and Shannon, no loss of value. No. With change comes meaningful. Apologies to everyone for running a little bit over. Welcome Judge Allen, Hannah, Stacy, over. Thank you for being with us today.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and thanks for having us. This was my first budget presentation for Gig Harbor. So I am happy to be here and be able to make it in person with respect to our, oh, yes, over page fifteen.
And did you all get my, you know, with the correct, do you need a copy?
I do.
I made several. There's two pages. So grab two.
Need to walk around. I will try to be quick so you can fit in the next presentation and get on with your meetings. I know you've had a long day. All right, I'm going to just talk about some of the highlights. We have resumed a court in person and we are now a hybrid court. So we do a majority of our hearings in person, but we also have a one hour hardship calendar for people that live out of state, out of the area, that don't have licenses or some reason why they request that they can appear by Zoom. We also do all of our infractions by Zoom, so people don't have to take a day off work to come adjudicate a one hundred and thirty nine dollar fraction. They can just appear by Zoom. We also are doing our Kitsap County Jail calendar by Zoom also. And so we fit those calendars within our regular court calendar where we're also doing in person hearings. During the last year, we have cleared up the backlog of the forty plus jury trials that had been backlog for the last two years because of COVID and no trials happening. So that is now cleared up. It was just, it was more scheduling and just pushing cases through the system than it was actual trials that occurred. But until you get them set and you make people move forward with resolution, it doesn't happen. So we've got those all wrapped up and now we're just scheduling within our ninety day speedy trial. So one of the big things that we've done is the reclassification of our two court clerks, making them judicial specialists. And thank you to Katrina and Shannon and the city and everybody involved for making that a priority. It was important to them and to the court. And you guys just took that right up to the top of the list and it's very much appreciated. We entered into a new contract with our collection agency, hired Dynamic Collection, which is a local agency. Our court, our collection agency where we were using moved out of state and just weren't as receptive to our needs. So we entered into a contract with the new collection agency. We also got our security contract in place and now have an outside security contract for the court. Started last week. They showed up. So good start. And it worked really well. Yes, we had a Washington state control. Yeah, it it worked really well. So, you know, it's a training process, you know, letting them know our expectations and what we need. But hopefully we'll get some consistency with who comes in. Stacy and I worked together and we resolved all of our revised, all of our court forms, created new court forms over the year. Everything has been updated, changed, and we worked hard on getting that done.
And by the way, we save thousands of dollars by making our own forms rather than sending them out for printer or printing. So we, using Microsoft Word, we've made them into templates. So by that, the clerk that's in the courtroom can work, filling out these things at warp speed. And so it's really, I mean, it's right, it forms a big deal, but no, it really is quite something.
That's awesome. And they're interactive, so we can change them as we need them. Just the other day, we went in and said, okay, this isn't working. And we, Stacy just sits down on the template, we modify it and tell everybody what the thing we've changed is and the process just moves on. So it's.
And we have hundreds.
Hundreds of forms. And there's probably twenty key ones that we use. And what we did is we took all of the critical items that we use all the time and made those the key forms. And that way defendants only see what they need to see and all of the other hundred and fifty requirements that the state has that we only use every six months on one form. We've removed that and put them in a different form. So it's much more user friendly for the defendants to know what I expect from them. And probably our biggest change in the budget for twenty three, twenty four increase is the security. Because we've been Zoom for the last two years, there really hasn't been a lot of security expenses. And that's why our budget is at sixty nine percent for twenty twenty two, because we didn't have those security expenses. And also twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four budget, you have new equipment expectations for our new case management system where we're a pilot for for the state's new system. And there are some equipment that's in our budget that we're going to be required to have in order to run this new case management system.
Supplies or under capital outlet? I didn't see.
Yeah, it'll be absorbed within the budget because there's no, it's not a huge expense.
It's, yeah, it's.
Talking signature pads.
Yeah, it's not like the rest of these people.
No.
So it's not a huge outlay, but it is something that we we need in our budget.
That's great that you're part of the pilot program.
It's an honor.
Sure, we'll go with it's an honor. It's a lot of work and it's been pushed back. And we're hoping beginning of the first half of twenty twenty three that that will go into place. But it's our state and they're still developing the system that we're using. So it could be put off even further, but we're one of the pilot courts. So we'll keep y'all posted how it goes. Twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four goals, we're going to try to get Pierce County Jail to appear by Zoom just for officer transport times, safety issues of bringing prisoners to the courthouse. They're developing a room there where they're getting little Zoom pods. So it might be some more money to have the at the jail end, but it will save officer time and officers on the street. So it should balance out. Once we, once it's in place, we can come to you and let you know.
That's our officers.
Our officers go to do the transport. Yeah, so it takes them off the street. They bring them, you know, it's a good two or three hours of their time at least. So if we can pay the jail a little bit more to have one of their officers stand by load there in Zoom, I think it's definitely going to save money in the long run. So that's one of our big goals. Again, the pilot work project is something that we're going to be working on next year. And then we have a, not going to go into a lot of detail, we're going to have a meeting on this a little bit later. But there's a case that came down from our Supreme Court that basically held all of our drug convictions and drug paraphernalia convictions unconstitutional. So we need to vacate all of the convictions and refund all the money. So the state has given us a budget for the time it's going to take for the court staff, the prosecutors, my time, which we will have to, the city will have to pay it. And then we submit an invoice to the state and then the state reimburses the city for all of that time. Also, we have to reimburse all of the fines, but the state has given us a fund to, once we reimburse those fines, the city does, then the state will reimburse the city. So whatever costs that come out of that, the state is one hundred percent covering. It's just going to be a timing and budgeting issue. So. As long as we have records. Yes. Yeah, we've got a spreadsheet of
two hundred and thirty five cases that I ran initially. Uh, two hundred and thirty-five cases that I ran initially, um, but I later rediscovered that it didn't have all of the RCWs that cover that drug statute. So it could be slightly higher. But those are the current, um, cases that are in our judicial information database. Um, but it is possible someone who had a nineteen-seventy could say, hey, I, you know, they're not on my spreadsheet because they're not, no longer in the database, but they could, you know, come to the court and petition to have it vacated and reimbursed.
How much money are we talking? Because we have got accounts receivable of seven million or something like that, don't we? But they're uncollectible, you know, all the old stuff.
They won't get, if they haven't paid it, they won't.
Well, no, but I guess I'm saying there's a, we, a lot of money runs through there over the years. Do we have any idea how much money?
They gave us, I think, um, I want to say approximately sixty thousand dollars, they expect. Uh, somewhere around the sixty to seventy thousand dollar range for cost to do this. And then about a same or a little bit more to, um, do the reimbursements.
The reimbursement for the staff time to handle and process movements. So we have to keep track of all those things and then spell spreadsheet.
And then, you know, it's going to be staff overtime, you know, prosecutor will have time, I will have time. And then we just submit that time and we'll, we're going to come up with a process, um, working with the city on how we're going to do that. But that's going to be a big project that needs to be done before June of next year.
Everyone meeting schedule to talk about it internally with us and Dave, so we'll make sure that you all are informed.
Yeah. So that's, uh, one of our big goals for twenty-twenty-three and then long-range planning. Um, we've got, um, uh, Becky going to our court management certification program. Uh, she's starting this, this year. It's a five-year program. You know, that's spread out over the next five years. And then Kelly will be starting that the following year. It's just additional training. Um, looking in anticipation of someday, Stacy.
I'm getting old.
Choosing to leave and, you know, having that, um, knowledge. So.
I become retirement age in about six years. So, and it's a five-year program. So we're hoping to get, you know, that succession planning in the mix.
Great. Get some cross-training.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you guys have any questions for Stacy or I? Or do you think that you want to ask?
No, no, we have, we have covered it all.
I can see how well we work together.
All of us do. We have, I have the best group of people that you, you just can't imagine. I've been in many courts and we're just, um, it's just so fun. I mean, and it's so fun to come to work because they're just great.
Well, remember that's your next contract.
A lot of work.
Thank you. So let's take a one-minute stretch and I'll put on the water and then we'll bring it home with HR.
Thank you for being flexible, counsel. These meetings, we try really hard to get them done.
You're trying and they're reach out.
It's good, it's good. It's all necessary conversation and good questions and, yeah. Thanks for sticking around. Oh my goodness.
Sorry. Last but not least.
Yes, we did the best.
Oh, right. Well, we, we wing it every day all the time.
I was looking, I'm like, oh, Shannon, that'd be after.
I know.
Communications. And then I'm like, I'm thinking. Where is Shannon?
So where are, where is it? What page is it in here?
Twenty-one.
So it did get lumped into administration.
Yeah, so I had put HR and IT under administration and then.
The reason they're still in there is it goes to the budget ordinance. Uh, and in the budget ordinance, we have administration, we've always traditionally called it administration finance, but it includes all those functions and that's the legal appropriation. And we didn't want to do too much change at once.
Yeah, it's all good.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's all, yeah, no, no fault here. We just felt bad.
I was trying to tell Katrina, that's why it's in administration and I, the concept of pulling it out.
I mean, it is, but then.
Actually, it is, but just the dollars are in there. And so we present it that way. So it appears.
At sixty percent.
Screen or is this long screen?
I'm on the screen.
We could probably unplug Josh's, plug it in the other.
But the power, we could just want Mark words, but that was. Oh, my computer might die. I believe that this power cord is. Yeah.
How much is it left? Sixteen?
All right, I think we're good. I think it was back.
This is Josh's, by the way, if he doesn't come down.
Oh, oh, so extra power cords.
But are you into your computer?
It's awkward. Okay. All right, Shannon, take it away.
All right, uh, uh, to start, thank you for the bonus session. Not having seen HR on the agenda, anticipating that it was nested in administration, I wasn't fully prepared, but I just captured a few notes with the few minutes that we have. So I'll, um, work through this just based on, um, a representation of the materials that you have there in front of you. So it's page twenty-one and page twenty-two. And, uh, to start, I would just say it's been such a privilege to serve the city. I've been here for just about six months and in a couple of weeks, it'll be six months and it's really been a privilege to be here. Um, and I've been serving in the interim major director role for about that time. And it's such an honor to do so. And most of all, in fact, earlier, I was going to be a segment for HR. I was hoping to invite the HR team to join us here in the gallery just so that I could really recognize and celebrate the extraordinary work that they do each day. Because if it weren't for what they do, we wouldn't be able to serve the city and staff the way that it happens each day. Uh, so Linda Grasser, as you may know, she's a payroll benefits administrator. She's been here for twenty-plus years. Uh, Diane Bertram has been here the last few years, uh, serving in a hybrid of roles and she's on the HR team. And, uh, Desiree Need is the HR payroll assistant. And it's with this team that we perform magic every day in service to staff in balance with what is the council expectations and administration directives as well. So, uh, what you'll see captured there as a summary of our key highlights, um, of course, you can read through that in detail, but we expect by the end of the year to successfully negotiate the police collective bargaining agreement. We're in that process now. First Kelly spoke to that briefly earlier. Most of our focus has been on recruiting. You hear that regularly. You see that in the weekly update emails as well. Um, it's been pretty extraordinary to be a partner with our department heads and supervisors to recruit great talent for the vacancies that we've had. Uh, there remain a number of those, but I'm really encouraged by the progress we're making with quality candidates and great selections. And that's been demonstrated by some of the staff we've met already. Uh, related, there are tremendous opportunities in improving the onboarding experience. And that's kind of the language that I like to use as it relates to staff experience. But equally important is how we onboard candidates who become our staff and providing a quality onboarding experience is important because that is often what drives how likely it is somebody stays in employment or decides to move on. I will admit that there's still a lot of opportunity for improvement. Uh, but most of all, the time to hire is, is improved and so that's been a real point of progress. Uh, in the next bullet point on page twenty-two, you'll see that systems and processes remain a critical opportunity for the city. And while we've made great improvements already, uh, there are significant improvements yet to come. And so I'll speak to that in just a moment as it relates to our goals in the next couple of years. Uh, we've also really prioritized the strategic plan that people have adopted and is driven by the mayor and the city administrator uh, focus on culture and really investing as a priority, the staff experience through culture. And so in that regard, we've hosted a number of wellness or staff recognition and appreciation events this year that have been received incredibly positively. And, uh, staff offer great input around what they enjoy about those events and what opportunities there are for future events, uh, in coming years. Uh, and then we've also needed to really reestablish consistent standards and timing with the performance evaluation program. And back this morning with the leadership team, we had some discussion around enhancing and improving the performance evaluation process. Um, it's been my observation that, um, performance evaluations have been a bit hit or miss over recent years. Um, those that have been conducted are largely because staff may be eligible for a wage adjustment or step increase as they're called. Um, but staff who may not be eligible for a wage increase or step adjustment, um, haven't maybe received their evaluations. Uh, or they've kind of been boilerplate. And so with good intentions, good, good intentions, I fully acknowledge. Um, there's a lot of opportunities to enhance and improve that because the priority of providing feedback to staff uh, is critical in providing feedback around how they're performing well and in what areas they have for growth and improvement and to, uh, develop a career pathway for, um, staff to, and you engaged or retain in the city. So as it relates to the twenty-three, twenty-four goals in the next budget cycle, we'll be continuing with our focus on service excellence, which is really demonstrated in our outcomes for twenty-twenty-two and what we expect to continue for twenty-three and twenty-four. Uh, we remain committed to conducting an employee engagement or satisfaction survey. We've just concluded that survey period, as you know, recently. Um, and we anticipate those results in the next couple of weeks, a full summary of those results, which we'll be eager to share. Uh, and we are committed to continuing with that effort annually thereafter. And so that's why you see it designated as an expense. Uh, we'll remain focused on staff experience. And so that relates to special, special events and engagement opportunities. It also is recognition and rewards. And so we're talking about birthdays and anniversaries and, uh, special accomplishments. And when a staff achieves their certification or their college degree, how are we really being mindful about recognizing rewarding staff and really demonstrating that through, again, our strategic plan? And what is valuing our staff, empowering our staff and recognizing the great value that they bring? Because without staff, our work doesn't happen, of course. Uh, as referenced a couple, few times in the presentations we heard today, a salary and benefit study is going to be critical for twenty-twenty-three. The labor market has changed dramatically. You all know that in your work based on feedback in the community, what you hear from staff, what you have and will likely see in the staff engagement survey as well. Wages are important. And they're not always the most important, but right now in this economy, they have emerged as one of the key priorities. And so what we recognize is there's really a need, uh, to test our positions to the market. And in order to do that effectively, we need to ensure that we have job descriptions that effectively represent the work that is being done so that we're comparing the right position in the market to determine where we may be off the mark or where we may be on the mark. And so, um, through that, we're, we'll also be engaging the unions. Uh, we've got two negotiations next year that will really be informed around what adjustments may need to be.
And bullet point number three, salary benefit study, uh, to assess and determine any needed adjustments. Is the one hundred thousand dollars what the study cost or is that the adjustment?
So that is an estimate of the cost of the salary study, which is significant, we recognize, but is the going rate of the market, if you will, and engaging a consultant uh, to assess market data based on the positions that we have in our structure. This does not represent what would be estimated in any adjustment that needed to occur.
That's a very big number, but absolutely necessary. I think, uh, the hundred thousand dollars is, uh, just a, a milestone or a bullet point at what can be saved, uh, by retention and gain people the right amount and recruiting people. So it's a hundred thousand dollars in my opinion. It's very, very well invested.
Thank you. I appreciate your feedback and what I imagine is likely the collective opinion around the critical investment that that will be. Because it's based on that expert data that will help inform what adjustments may need to occur to, again, support our commitment to retaining quality staff and being able to attract quality staff just the same.
It was the over, and with your oversight, I have no doubt it will be well done.
Thank you. Thank you. And in fact, related, I, in my recent experience, we conducted this similar salary study. Um, and the results of that really demonstrated a need for dramatic change in wages. And so, um, we developed a three to five-year plan. Um, because perhaps it can't all be done immediately because if the adjustments are that significant, you know, realistic to do in one year period. But we'll be prepared to share that data with all of you staff just the same. Uh, and that is the primary point of feedback. I would even suggest that as a primary anchor to what our twenty-three, twenty-four goals will be. Uh, because that really drives staff experience in a very significant way. Uh, we hear that feedback again from the staff, from the unions with whom we work, uh, from the community and the like. Uh, what I would also call your attention to as a primary anchor is the safety and risk position. And perhaps you've heard a bit about this in the past. We are prioritizing risk and safety with the city based upon input from many. Um, and in my assessment, in the brief time that I've been here and in the conversations that Katrina and Mayor and I've had, we really have a need to streamline safety and risk within the organization. Our primary goal with that position will be to ensure safety first and foremost of all staff. Right now, as you may know, much, much of our risk and safety work is piecemeal. There is an element of it in any variety of departments, but there's not one clear strategy around safety and risk for the organization. And there's a real opportunity to enhance, to, um, create greater efficiencies around that. Um, it will be focused on staff training, um, record-keeping, developing citywide safety and the risk analysis and development of a plan to include regular audits. This is consistent with what a lot of cities do. Certainly organizations do just the same. Um, this role will also manage our workers' compensation program and the retro program that we participate in through AWC. Uh, and will also ensure effective and consistent reporting. Um, you probably all know this, but if you were to do research, you'd find that most expert sources would suggest a return on investment of at least three dollars per every dollar that you spend on risk and safety efforts. And so while we recognize this, this is a new investment for the organization, we're confident uh, that the return on investment will be very significant. Um, and we'll support staff again with safety. We'll partner with every department to provide clarity and consistency, um, with these important endeavors.
But you see that, uh, the city's history with the workplace or industrial accidents or risk and safety in the past decade is unusual or is it on par with other? I mean, I've, I've read all the, those reports that we used to get once in a while and they didn't seem out of line. Like there was a, uh, huge difference than what the norm might be. So.
It's not just accidents, like a physical accident, it's.
It's not just accidents, like physical accidents, it's multiple levels of safe, risk and safety across the, across the board. Um, it can be legal risk, it can be, um, I don't know what all the categories are of risk and, and safety, but it's more than just physical injuries. It's other things as well. I don't know if you guys feel the need to examine that anymore, but our, our physical injury, um, we're not, it's, we're not an outlier in terms of the amount of employees that we have.
I would say, based on my experience on the retro board, we're sort of borderline. And when I say borderline, uh, the pool looks at each city and whether you're contributing positively to the pool. So in other words, if your experience factor is below what you pay, you're contributing positively to the pool. And if you go three years in a row where you're negative, they boot you out. And, and I remember sitting there, uh, we were two years. And, and so I'm thinking we've been living dangerously, if you will, because we've been lucky. And, and I was, I was really in fear because of the climate that we were getting with the employees. When you start getting a, a negative environment in the employee experience, uh, injuries start going up. And, and it, it's just a direct correlation. And we haven't really seen that yet. Well, you were saying not injuries necessarily. Then you run the risk of people not reporting injuries. And that's negative on the other side.
I have heard a bit of feedback as such, actually, Councilmember Lindenberg. I, in the short time that I have been here, I, I've heard staff have expressed to me what has been a hesitation in recent years to report as such, be it work-related injuries, be it discrimination and harassment, which would be a conundrum of this person's role. Um, in my experience in the past, I provided oversight to safety and risk. And it is really the umbrella of all things. So as the mayor has indicated, it's not just, um, the physical safety of staff and so on. It is, um, the myriad of aspects of risk to the organization. And what has been a culture or climate of hesitation to report, um, poses its own risk amplified, I would say. So fortunately, there's been a dramatic shift and staff are beginning to express. So I might anticipate we could see a bit more. Um, but that also better helps us understand where we need to educate and train and put measures in place to resolve.
I implemented departmental bonuses based on lower injuries. But what I found was there was peer pressure within those departments for that person not to report. And so it's kind of false thinking, you know, it didn't take too long to get over that.
Yeah, well, and heaven forbid another pandemic hit us. Had our HR department had this position when COVID hit, this person would have taken a lot of those responsibilities off of the HR director in terms of every form that had to be reported. Every, I mean, so much paperwork just buried HR during, during COVID nineteen. And so that, it's, it's, I mean, heaven forbid, not on all the way, if we don't ever have anything like that again. But should anything like that happen again, this person would have.
And to be better prepared for those.
Yes, yes. We would still going in prepared instead of like, like dog paddling through with our heads, like barely above the water.
And also with reporting as well, you know, right now, when we don't have a dedicated person, it's kind of, who's gonna do what?
Right.
You know?
Right.
And having someone who's dedicated to it and knowledgeable in how to fill it out properly and then how to give the feedback back to Shannon, hey, based on this, I think that we can do this and this and this better, rather than the person now submitting reports. And it's just a report that's submitted and there's not really a discussion about it. So there's a lot of opportunity.
Yeah, just. And, and to that end, in the time that I've been here, I, I've been eager to find information that demonstrates trends and it doesn't exist and, and to know one's fault. But in what is the absence of a clear strategy, in, in the absence of one person ultimately responsible, um, there, there wasn't really the capacity to, um, to develop strategy and to identify trends and then, uh, develop training and, um, environmental change and so on to address. Uh, the one last thing I'll note as it relates to the risk and safety officer is though it is nested under the HR umbrella. And I referenced this before, but it is important to call out that this role will serve the entire city. And so the oversight happens to be under HR, um, based on, um, kind of the intersection, of course. But also given my experience of the past, um, but will effectively serve as a partner to all department heads and service to the entire city based on any variety of risk and safety matters, um, as such. Uh, and then just for the final two bullet points, I would just demonstrate that, uh, staff will be supportive of continuous development related to staff training and development. And, uh, Katrina has referenced this before. Um, yeah, as it relates to some limitations in the past for staff in being invested in and understanding what their value is, not only in their current area of expertise, but in the growth of their expertise or what might be their desire to grow with the city and their career as such, um, to demonstrate pathways. And, and our commitment as it relates to staff training and development will continue through performance evaluations. And the feedback that supervisors can provide them as it relates to the performance, uh, supervisory training. We're talking about developing a leadership academy as well, which will be done in-house. Um, and will really enhance our ability to serve staff and leaders, just the thing. Uh, and then lastly, the productivity and efficiency realm. We've estimated at an expense of about thirty thousand dollars there. And frankly, that may be even a little bit modest because of the multitude of opportunities we have to enhance process and systems. Uh, you may know that we are still completing paper time sheets and leave requests.
We love the music.
And so I am determined to partner with all department heads and with our payroll and benefits administrator to really get current on process and system in any variety of ways, but particularly with team keeping and, uh, with the management, just the same. So we just kind of, um, propose a modest amount to get things started in that regard.
We have twenty-five thousand dollars in for, uh, supervisory and leadership training in each year. And that is on purpose, uh, because as one of the probably key backbones of this organization is having our supervisors know what their job is and what their responsibility is. But not only telling them what it is, but showing them and training how to do it, how to coach, how to, um, listen effectively, how to, you know, do some of those things that aren't inherently known. So we want, and we do have quite a few new supervisors that we have promoted, um, as has been mentioned here today. And so we need to make sure that we're setting them up for success in terms of, you know, all of those key jobs, uh, duties. And then as far as the leadership academy, having our leadership team get together and go through, um, larger things, visioning, supporting, you know, objective, uh, community objectives, all of those kind of larger, um, visionary things um, that have kind of been lacking. And so on all of those fronts, it's a pretty significant cost. But the rewards are great because especially middle management. Um, they have, they're kind of the key to employee morale. They're the ones that the employees talk to the most and then they get, you know, directions from above. And so if we can train them how to, um, effectuate their job better, it will have a better experience for employees.
Well, and, and though wages remain the primary point of feedback from staff, as you may know, uh, the number one reason staff still leave jobs is because of their supervisor or leader, the number one reason. Wages is secondary still, even in today's market. And so the more we invest in the training and development of our supervisors and our leaders, ultimately, as it relates to change management and conflict resolution and how you effectively develop your staff and support them and so on, much less cast vision and strategy. Um, the more effective we'll be in retaining the great staff that we have.
I just want to say that I am so impressed with the work that you guys. Amazing. Thank you. I wish they could be in the room to hear that.
But also the, the difference in staff and just the demeanor of the staff when you see everyone is so totally different than it is in general.
For the culture that cares. When you have a culture where people are afraid to speak up or there's a fear element and no disrespect to any path, sometimes just certain things happen that create that. You put yourself at so much risk, so much risk for so many things. You, you couldn't even tell how much it would cost, you know, from liability to all kinds of things. But when you're showing the care, I mean, it's just the investment.
And we know that it's a continued effort, right?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. So we acknowledge that and, um, within the, you know, resources budget and others, we acknowledge that there's more work to do. So we don't intend to sit on our laurels and, and think what we've done so far is good enough.
Very, yeah. Awesome. Yeah, really great.
It's sexy as for new patrol cars, but the chair is more exciting. Smiling all over. In the direction the department's going, which is the part, is the direction.
There's three right there. We appreciate that work. Anything you meant, wanted to mention in, um, in half November, could you bring, bring anything extra that you would like to, to bring in for them? So, um, council, is there a motion to adjourn? All of the members say hi.